All right, board members, if you could please be seated, we're gonna get started. Board members, will we be started in a minute? All right, good evening and welcome to the regular school board meeting of Tuesday, June 21st. And see, we have a number of folks in the crowd, it's a little warm, but what I'm glad about it being warm is that it means it's nice outside. So, we've needed this summer breeze. Clerk Lefler Kemp, will you please call roll?
Chair Harla, here. Member Johnston. Member Kirby. Member Oswald. Member Sandsted. Member Welty. Superintendent Grunset. Deputy Clerk Bill Hanson. Secretary Melinda Tebel. And our student reps, thank you for coming out. Spencer Fredrickson from East. And Johanna Undin from Denfeld. Thank you.
Thank you. For all those that are able, you please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, we'll move on to the approval agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Move by Member Sandsted. Seconded by Member Lefler Kemp, any discussion? Seeing no lights, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Next, we move on to the reading and approval of the minutes. The first is for our regular school board meeting on May 2016, do I have a motion to approve? So, move by Member Sandsted, seconded by Member Kirby. Any discussion? Member Welty.
Yes, just one small correction, I believe, I haven't called this person up to make sure, but on the third page, one, two, three, four, five, the sixth speaker, Henry La Liberty, I believe that that's probably spelled L.A.L.I.B.E.R.T.E. instead of L.A.H.B.E.R.T.E.
All right, your attention to detail is noted. Thank you, any further discussion? Seeing no other lights, all those in favor of the minutes with the changes, the correct letter, say aye? Aye, opposed? Passes seven zero. Next, we move on to the special school board meeting, executive close session of June 14th, do I have a motion? Move by Member Lefler Kemp, seconded by Member Welty, any discussion? Seeing no lights, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Passes seven zero. Next, move on to school and community recognition, board members, if you could please join me up front. Good evening, members of the board, this month, I am pleased to welcome Ted Moore for recognition. Mr. Moore is a driver for Voyager Bus Company and, like all people who drive a school bus, play an important role in supporting the safety and the well-being of our students. He is also the recipient of the 2015 Transportation Specialist Award from the Minnesota School Bus Operators Association. Drivers are nominated by their supervisors and applications are judged by the Minnesota Office of Pupil Transportation Safety. Criteria include years of service, dedication to safety, community service achievements, communication with school staff, and letters of recommendation. We congratulate Mr. Moore for receiving this prestigious award. In addition to honoring bus drivers for excellence, the award includes a $1,000 check in Mr. Moore's name to go towards helping students in schools. Members of the board, Mr. Moore designated Homecroft Elementary to receive a $1,000 donation, which will be used for the school's outdoor classroom. Many thanks to Mr. Moore for his service to our students and for this generous donation to support the education of the children of Duluth. Right, just a note for folks that are looking to have public comment, the sign up is right up front here, if you haven't had a chance to sign up, if you are looking to sign up, you need to sign it before the last speaker is called. Our first, and just a brief note to folks in the audience, we do work as hard as we can to exhibit civility, and we have, as a board, passed the civility code and have worked in our community on that, and so we just want to make sure that we're honoring folks and we're holding true to our norms of being positive. So, we welcome comments of our board that are constructive, but not, that aren't cutting of individual people, but maybe provide constructive feedback. So, we welcome your thoughts, comments, and concerns. First, we have Erin Crowell, and as Erin comes up, I'll note that members speaking have three minutes to speak. Clerk Lefler Kemp will keep time, you'll initially see a green light, and then when a red light comes up, it will start, it starts flashing, we just got a new one, so I can't remember the process for it. It starts flashing, and then when it's solid red, it's time to be done, and if you, I'll give you kind of a couple seconds after that, but if not, I'll politely wave. So, Erin, welcome, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Erin Crowell, and I am one of the parents in the group Duluth Parents for Healthy Playgrounds. I want to thank you all for listening to parents' concerns and reviewing lots of research about the potential toxicity of scrap tire mulch on playgrounds. And thank you for putting a resolution on the table tonight, that is a step toward reducing young kids' exposure to this material. I am proud that this district might become a leader in protecting children's health by removing the mulch. Parents will be more assured once a time commitment is made, and we will be grateful once that last shovel full of tire mulch is removed from playgrounds. I do think tonight's resolution could be improved by adding something like, "The administration's proposal options, proposed options shall reflect a goal of removing all mulch from district playgrounds as soon as feasible, but before September 2017." Young children roll in the mulch, they bury each other in it, they stuff it in their clothes, and even put it in their molds. Their interactions with the material are intense and repeated day after day, for especially prolonged periods by children in summer programs like Keyzone. A recent Yale University study detected nearly 100 different chemicals in scrap tire mulch, some of which are probable carcinogens, and many of which have not even had a toxicity assessment done on them. Both the federal government and California are now conducting studies to better identify the compounds in the material and assess potential hazards. However, we should have no illusions that these studies can comprehensively address the complexities of children's exposure to tire mulch on playgrounds. More and more research is showing that combinations of chemicals, even in small doses, may interact to amplify harmful effects. Current U.S. regulatory testing, however, only assesses the risk of one chemical at a time. And young children are uniquely susceptible to the effects of chemicals because their bodies are still developing. Dr. Warren Porter, professor of environmental toxicology at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, has stated, quote, "There has been no testing for combined neurological, endocrine, and immune effects of these chemicals, which makes them particularly problematic for young children's exposure. We are now beginning to understand that exposures, even in the parts per trillion, may be biologically significant," end quote. In summary, precaution is both reasonable and wise when it comes to young children playing with scrap tire mulch, especially when natural alternatives, like the wood fiber at Congdon Elementary, can meet safety standards. Let's be done with the toxic chemicals in this material, and let's get back to focusing on what playgrounds are all about, are kids having fun? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen Schuler.
Welcome. Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to make some comments. My name is Kathleen Schuler, and I work for Conservation Minnesota, and I'm also the co-director of Healthy Legacy, which is a statewide public health coalition, we have 35 members, and we've been working to eliminate toxic chemicals from consumer products. We've helped to pass seven bills in the last nine years to regulate chemicals such as bisphenol A, formaldehyde, and toxic flame retardants. We recently discovered that crumb rubber is a potentially significant toxic exposure where children play every day. We're working with parents in Duluth, Minneapolis, Rochester, and Edina, who are asking for safer alternatives. Parents across the state and across the country want to protect their children's health and are asking for precautionary action to prevent exposure to inherently toxic crumb rubber material. As Duluth's school board members, consider the proposed resolution, to listen to parent concerns and replace the mulch material in school playgrounds with safer alternatives, know that you are doing the right thing. I thank you for putting the health of students first and providing a model for other school districts around the state. While parents are doing the important work locally, Healthy Legacy wants to support precautionary action by advocating for protective state policy. In 2016, we worked with Minnesota legislators to introduce a bill to create a moratorium on new uses of crumb rubber in playgrounds and sports fields, pending the results of additional studies. The bill also requires signage to reduce exposures, such as brushing off clothing, washing hands, covering drinks, et cetera. School personnel should be aware that hand sanitizer will not eliminate chemicals, it's designed to kill germs. Only good hand washing with soap and water can reduce ingestion exposure. Fortunately, beginning in the 2017 school year, it's expected that in Duluth, this won't be a problem. We'll be going back to the legislature in 2017 to advocate again for this bill. Just as you are investing in your children's health and with respect to playgrounds, I ask that you do the same for athletic fields, and please take a close look at potential health effects and future liability and replacement costs of using crumb rubber in future athletic fields. If you decide against natural grass turf, please use one of the safer options to prevent risks and costs down the road. And I believe you received a copy of a letter from Dr. Philip Landryan, who's a pediatrician and dean of global health at Mount Sinai School of Medicine. He supports this type of precautionary action, quoting Dr. Landryan, "Any level of exposure to known carcinogens or neurotoxins is too much. There are no safe levels of exposure to these chemicals, especially for children." I know that replacing the tire mulch is not an easy decision, but I thank you for having the foresight to place the health of children first to prevent immediate or long-term adverse health effects in the future. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Nathaniel Piscatelli.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. Dear school board, my name is Nathaniel Piscatelli, I'm here to present an issue, a concern on safety that I have. The reason I stand before you today is to express an opinion of safety concern that is taking place inside our school and community. The safety concern I present to you in regards to our children in your schools is a relationship between them and law enforcement. Many children and young adults' opinions and behaviors are shaped and produced by products of their environment, such as other peers, who they admire, respect, and want to be, living conditions such as what they can afford, and social standing class. From these profile labels and stereotypes, ideas and ways of thinking are created. People are not looked at for who they are, but what they represent. A cop is not looked at as who they are, but as a uniform. Let's put names, relationships to the people in these uniforms. Let's make it so these officers see a kid driving with a flat bill hat and not think this person is bad news, but instead be like, "Oh, that's Maurice, he just got off of basketball practice." There are a couple officers who are continually on grounds, I've heard. Their names are known to the children in these schools, but when other officers are seen, they're called derogatory names. My idea on how to change this is to bring in rotating officers who patrol that school area district in a position of authority within schools, such as working alongside with the physical education teacher while classes are taking place. Safety-wise, this will greatly improve law enforcement knowledge of specific individuals, so if a child's name does come up, they will know the best way to deal with the situation, which could prevent a future Joey Carl incident from taking place. Also, personal relationships between our children and law enforcement could be a potential trust builder, greatly improving the chances of our children feeling comfortable going or talking to the police. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lindsay Jungmar? Youngmar?
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Lindsay Youngman, and I'm, my comment will return to the playground safety issue. I'm a former high school teacher myself, I'm currently an instructor at UMD, and I have two daughters who will be attending Homecroft starting a couple years. And I have the similar safety concerns, but I feel like Erin and others have already eloquently expressed those. I just wanted to add to the conversation a couple other thoughts that always occur to me as I'm, as I'm following this issue. The first is just that I'm a passionate supporter of public schools, both Duluth and elsewhere, and, you know, I know, as, I know you know, with the competition from charter schools that's going on, part of it, I feel like other parents I've talked to as well, those of us who are dedicated supporters of public schools want to be able to feel excited that we're leading and not always kind of trying to catch up, and this is an issue I feel like we might be able to lead on as well with the playground safety. So, that was one thing I wanted to mention. And then, the last thing I wanted to say was, because my husband is actually a teacher in the district, he teaches at Denfeld, and so we know all too well, both in the classroom and from a job standpoint, about budget cuts, and I think I had sort of backed off on this issue for a bit, even though it's a deep concern to me, because I do know, you know, budget realities, and I thought, you know, if it's a choice between replacing playground mulch and teacher salaries, or textbooks, or class sizes, you know, realistically, there are maybe bigger fish to fry. But then I realized, I had read about the difference between the general and the facilities fund, which I didn't know about, and I feel like that might be important to make more clear to parents, because I think if parents know that this isn't an either-or type situation, that it could be a both-and, I think there might be a lot more people that are vocal advocates, because they do know that you're making tough decisions, and I think I and they respect that, but if it was something where there maybe are some funds, or some matching funds out there, that could be really important to the discussion, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Corey Kersling.
Hello, I'm Corey Kersling, as many of you know, I started this issue about the playground, it's been two years now I've been working on this, and I'm gonna keep this very short and sweet. You know, you all know where my concerns lie, and I applaud you for considering this, and I feel like Duluth could be, is progressive enough to be the leader in, you know, leading a healthy choice. I also want to make it, you know, clear that with our group, Parents for, Duluth Parents for Healthy Playgrounds, that we are here for you. We are here to work with you, we are here to, I'm there with a shovel, put it that way, I'm ready to go to work. So, the sooner that we can make this happen, we feel the better. I realize with timelines, budget constraints, things like that, that all has to be considered, you know. I also presented you with information from a company, First State Tire Recycling, that is able to remove, recycle the product that would go into a road aggregate, so the tires would go back where they belong on the road, and not in our, on our children. I want to thank you for all that you've done and all of your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Melissa Jansen. Welcome.
Thank you, I'm Melissa Jansen, I am not nearly as prepared or well-spoken as the previous people, because they didn't know I was talking until I walked in the door. So, we're winging this. My concern is, as a parent, I have a kindergartner that potentially will be going to Homecroft. However, I strongly urge the board to move on their decisions for removing the tire mulch. It's one of those things where, as a parent, I think we would all appreciate to know where this is going, so we can choose where to put our children. This is a huge concern, I've been doing a lot of contacting of pediatric toxicologists, Dr. Porter is one, I have Dr. Williams, I have a Dr. Larson, that I've been talking with, that are very, very well-known researchers throughout the United States and throughout the world. These are not people that are laymen on PAHs, they are not laymen on what these chemicals are, and they are very concerned about this, and I feel that we really need to stop waiting, we need to move forward, and I think the parents deserve a timeline as to what that will be. I myself need to know a timeline, this is a very big decision, I do not want to put our child into a school and then turn around and say, "Well, sorry, I guess the board isn't moving forward as quickly, now you need to change schools." That's not fair to the children, that's not fair to the parents. Again, as Lindsay is, I'm a very strong proponent of public education, I think it's a great, I think it's a wonderful thing. I understand that this is a big endeavor, and I also don't believe it needs to be quite as big of an endeavor as it's sometimes made out to be. Do you have a workforce behind you, you have a lot of people that support you, that want to work with you to move forward in this, and move forward in a very timely and quick fashion, and I think that can be accomplished. We have people that are willing to write grants, we have people that are willing to work with the board to, literally, as Corey said, pick up a shovel and move the tire mulch. We have people that are willing to donate heavy equipment to also remove and to excavate, and I think we need to use those sources. So, I urge the board to move quickly on this topic and to potentially give us concrete timeframes as to when that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hillary Kersling.
Welcome. Thank you, board, I just want to say that it's been, it's been a long time and a lot of support from everybody, from other parents, from board members, various meetings, and we're just really appreciative of this time and to be able to have this choice, you know, it's something that my husband and I didn't really think very much of when our son was in preschool. We'd actually look for playgrounds that had the tire mulch, thinking like, "Oh, this is really safe, and he can fall from, you know, this height, and it'll be, it'll be wonderful," and it wasn't until we had more symptoms and exposure that we realized that this is just, it's overwhelming and it's not understood. And it does need to be addressed, and hopefully, we can get more support throughout the communities, and like, like Corey mentioned, that everybody's willing to help. So, I think Duluth can be that city that, you know, really brings closure. So, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. And last, we have Lauren Martel. Spencer, are there any other people that have signed up, please?
Good evening, board. As I was sitting there, I decided not to read this tonight, Sue asked me, Sue Tellerico was there last night, and I wanted to sleep peacefully through her retirement, I don't want to dig up the past, but I was going to kind of give the other side of this story. A former board member said she had to put up with us, I think there's some people on the board and some new people in administration who really don't know the story, what we put up with, so I was going to inform you a bit about that, but I'm just gonna make a few comments about the mulch. You know, I think it is an opportunity for the board and for this district to communicate better with the public, to reach out to the public, to show the public that they can respond in a way that's respectful, after everything we've been through. You know, the idea that we could push through a half-billion-dollar project with bond interest, $481 million, in two years, it was already going, and we can't handle this. When I was a candidate in, in 2013, I ran into several people that were concerned about it, here we are in 2016, and I think you just have to be more responsive to the public, and I hope you step up to it on this one. Thank you.
Seeing there's no further public comment, student member Fredrickson, did I just pay attention? Okay, thank you. We will move next on to, thank you, audience members, for your feedback, next we move on to reading communications, petitions, et cetera, superintendent.
Thank you. We did receive one formal letter from Mary Ann Harla, a teacher in the district, expressing her appreciation upon her retirement of a long and happy career in the Duluth Public Schools. Your mom, right?
It's my mom.
Yeah, it's very, she's a wonderful woman. It's very, she's a wonderful woman. So, moving on to the superintendent report, well, it's June, so school is out and families across the city were celebrating high school graduations. And this year was especially meaningful and moving for my wife and I, as our youngest son was graduating, and it's hard to believe that he's off to college. And it's going to take some, some getting used to at the Grand South Houses, well, as many other houses across the city, I'm sure. So, one of our most important responsibilities as educators is to, to help kids get prepared for their future, either career or college. And I've had lots of opportunities to talk to our graduating seniors as we're at graduations this year. And so many of them are off to college, and I talked to a few who are off to culinary school and excited to be a professional chef, and others entering construction apprenticeships and excited about a promising future. And others still were joining the military, some were off to military academies. And the theme was that they were all feeling very prepared and very excited about their future. And that's exactly what we want for our students. And as we prepare for next year, we'll continue to look for ways to make sure that all of our kids are college and career-ready. And along the way, we also celebrated many staff retirements, both teachers and principals. And we thanked them for their many, many years of service. I don't know, I think at the district retirement celebration, it was over a thousand hours of teaching that we were celebrating, or not hours, years of teaching. Hours wouldn't get us very far, would it? Anyway, following a very thorough process that involved administrators, district staff, teachers, and parents, we're happy to announce that we've hired four new principals for the district. And let's make sure I get the names right. Amy Warden is at Homecroft. Cynthia Maldonado will be at Stowe. Alyssa Maldonado, no relation, will be at Myers Wilkins Elementary. And Danette Sebo will be at Duluth East High School. And there were a lot of candidates who applied for these positions, which, it speaks well of our district and our community, that so many people were interested in coming to Duluth and serving in these positions. So we welcome them to our team, and we hope that you all extend a warm welcome to our community when you get a chance to meet them. I also, well, there's a lot of people here this evening, but I do want to talk about some security protocol changes that have happened in this building. To keep our students and our staff safe and to better align how this building works with all of the other buildings in the district, we've created one main public entrance, and that will be the entrance that is on Third Street. So if you're coming to the building during school hours, you'd use the Third Entrance, Third Street entrance. And this summer, we're also doing some construction to improve the parking lot and the driveway. It's a bit rough right now, and so hopefully we'll have a better process in place and keep all of our students and, and staff safe as we do that. In the meantime, the handicap accessible entrance is on the Lake Avenue side. There is a driveway with a ramp that goes to the elevator. If you need assistance or have questions about how exactly to get there, please call the district office, and we'd be happy to, to help you. And we apologize for any inconveniences during the construction process and as we prepare for a smoother future. I also want to take this opportunity, because it is summer, to share some information for our summer breakfast and lunch program. Once again, this year, we are providing both breakfast and lunch throughout the community. It started on June 14th, and it goes through August 26th. So it is all summer. We do have to close a little bit of time in August, just to make sure we have everything clean and sparkly ready for the end of the school year. It is funded by the USDA, and meals are provided to children 18 and younger. Adults who accompany children can purchase a meal for $3.80. The hours of breakfast are from 8:00 to 10:30 in the morning, and hours of lunch are 11:30 till 1:00. And so people can stop for breakfast or lunch at Lester Park, at Lowell, Myers Wilkins, Piedmont, Laura MacArthur, Stowe, Lincoln Park Middle School, Denfeld High School. And you could also pick up a brown bag lunch at Lincoln Park Boys and Girls Club. And if you need those times and those places, again, it's all listed on our website at And now, for a summertime report, I think we'll start with Joanna, if you would, please.
All right. So basically, the past month, we've just had a lot of wrap-up stuff at Denfeld. So we had spring sports wrap-up, which went really well. We had to say goodbye to a couple of teachers that spent a lot of time at Denfeld, which we're kind of sad to see go. Other than that, we just had students preparing to graduate, and that was kind of the biggest event this past month. So, that's about it.
Thank you. Spencer?
We had our schedules finalized by counselors, as they gave us like this slip, and we had to sign it by our parents, and we had to sign it. And if you want any changes, you had to like add in the number, but they also said what classes were being cut. And so I, there was over 10 classes being cut due to a sufficient amount of students. So, those classes were cut, and then they had to kind of rework their schedule, and that was a very efficient way to do it, instead of so many kids just being lined up at the counselor's office in the beginning of the year, which is crazy for them. Yeah, the East staff hosted a goodbye party for our retiring teachers. We also would like to thank Principal Knapp for her years of service, and are very excited to see our new principal, Danette Sebo. And we're excited to see what she can bring to the table and how she can improve East, and it's going to be a great year with her. Multiple track team members and the tennis team qualified for state this year, and we had them run around the school as we clapped for them. And that was kind of how we did our send-off on the last day of school. And as East, all East sports have wrapped up, we like to thank our coaches, because they're very devoted to their jobs, and they spend lots of time on just improving the kids. And it's a great way to see, improve how students think and kind of be there for them, for some that don't have great families or friends. And we'd also like to thank our athletic director, Sean Rhodes, for having another great year, and he's very organized and does a wonderful job. And we'd like to say commencement, commencement was a great success of the deck. Our all-night graduation party for all the students right afterwards was also awesome, which took place at UMD, and they had plenty of activities and everything. And our last splash dance was a great way to say goodbye to our seniors. So, we're excited to see for what happens next year.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Superintendent and students. Next, we have the report of standing committees, so we will head into our education committee. Member Lethla Kemp, if you could please read your report.
Yes, and I want to just start being, we have so many community members here, to mention that our education committee and our human resources committee and our business committee, the reports that we're doing tonight are really a summary and some action items that we have discussed last week during our regular committee meetings, and where we spend a couple hours with each of the committee meetings. And so, we welcome you to attend those committee meetings as well, the week before our regular scheduled board meeting. And for me, as Chair of the Education Committee, I have to say, when I think of the 700 and some graduates that we graduated throughout the district, I think of, with a lot of pride, many items that we talked about in the education committee since I've been on the board have curriculum and extracurricular activities and different programs have came through this committee. So, as I highlight, some of the things, know that every month, there's a similar background information provided to us and decision-making on a number of topics that fall just in this committee. So, just, I want to begin with our informational items, and Assistant Superintendent Amy Starzecchi each month provides us with her report of some of her activities, and that's on, on page five. And just want to highlight, this month, the Assistant Superintendent was very involved with principal interviewing, very involved with, working with our principals, doing principal evaluations at the end of the year. She also, as well as Dr. Carey, are involved with developing leadership teams in each of our schools. And so that is, is one of the areas she's spent time in. Also, she is working with other staff members in looking at how we can expand our early childhood programming throughout our district, and writing grants and looking at other funding options to add more classes, provide transportation, create and improve access for families. So, thank you for all the work you're doing there. And also, besides the breakfast program that we have and lunch program in summers, with our summer elementary schools, we also provide a program called Excel, which is a program focused on helping kids with reading and math. And it is at six different sites throughout the district. And Assistant Superintendent Starzecchi has been involved with hiring of the staff for that program, which runs June 28th through August 4th. And it was also great to have her attend all of the graduation ceremonies with us as school board members as well. So, thank you for all the work that you've been doing, Assistant Superintendent. The second informational item that we, or informational presentation we had was both by the Assistant Superintendent, as well as Ron Lake, who is our climate coordinator for the Duluth Public Schools. And he presented information on, on a number of activities that we're doing around building or continuing to build a safe and supportive school climate. And each month, in the last couple of months, at our committee meetings, we've had presentations, more in-depth presentations on the three key strategies our district is using around the continuous improvement in plan and basically around achievement for all children. And so this was one, the third of three presentations we had. Much of the information that he presented is also on our website. And we thank Ron Lake for the leadership he's taking on, he's taken on many initiatives around developing policies and developing trainings and procedures to help us have a more welcoming, as well as positive school climate. Then the next section that we spend time on each month is grant applications. And these are applications that our district staff have submitted, and there's a couple this month. And one is with the Bush Foundation. It's an application of $5,000, and if awarded, funds would be used to continue the partnership between Woodland Hills Academy and Animal Allies Human, Humane Society, working with at-risk students. And that also is recommended that we receive as informational. And then the second grant is Action for Healthy Kids Grant Application. Rachel, who works with our Lincoln Park Middle School, with our community schools, has an application for $5,000, and if awarded, this would be used to purchase equipment needed to increase our school breakfast program, kind of develop it in a different way to meet the needs of students more. And so that is also recommended as informational. Then D is Regulations, and for school board members on page nine is the New Regulation 532R, Regulation and Restrictive Procedures Plan. And we're moving towards alignment with the NSBA model policies, and so we're recommending moving this, our policy 5093 with some updates to comply with changes in state legislation and to serve as a new regulation 532R. And we had a pretty lengthy discussion on this, and again, appreciate the work that Ron Lake, our climate coordinator, as well as Jason Crane, our Director of Special Services, did on this. The next section is E, and it's externally-sponsored trip request. And both the, the two trips that are mentioned, one to Germany, Italy, and Switzerland, and the other to Germany for high school students from across the district. One is actually happening right now, and the other will be in a little bit later. And both of these items, it's just recommended that the Duluth School Board receive as informational. And these trips are not sponsored by the school district, and there's forms that need to be signed in that nature. Okay? And then the next section are action items. And the first one, or the first two are federal Head Start Grants. And one is to expand the schedule, and the second is a cost-of-a-living allowance grant. And the, we had the Director of Head Start, Pam Reese, present, and, and as always, she does a very complete presentation and provides us lots of background information. Both of these grants are due this month, and both, we recommend that the Duluth School Board accept and approve the, both items. And then the next section is Policies. And again, on page 30, the first one is 5093, and this is moving again to the NSBA model policies. And the administration is recommending the deletion of policy 5093, which would be replaced with NSBA policy 532. And this is the second reading for that. And then the second item under Policies is the new policy 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students from School Grounds. And this is a revised NSBA model policy. This is the second reading for this. And, and that's on page 36. The next section is Grant Awards, and this we do each month. And the grant acceptance is on page 41, and there's a resolution. And would you like me to read that, Chair Harla?
Yes, please.
Resolution E6163380, Acceptance of Grant Awards to Duluth Public Schools. Whereas Minnesota Statute 46503 requires a school district to accept grants by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the grant in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools. Now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described grant from said organization in accordance with the terms set forth here within. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to this organization. And the organization is the Education Minnesota Foundation for Excellence in Teaching and Learning. One of our school counselors at Ordine Middle School, Ordine Gingerbackus, is the contact with this, and the award is $13,500. And funds from this grant award will be used by the Duluth Educators Mentorship Program to provide mentor training for tenured teachers from various grade levels and curricular areas to assist in professional growth, provide support, and have a collaborative relationship with a mentee, a first-year educator. I move Resolution E6163380.
Moved by Member Lethla Kemp, seconded. Any discussion? Member Oswald?
I'm just referring to our, we got an extra handout at the committee meeting that had an extra, had another grant on it, that, from the Purpitch Center.
Good point. Assistant Superintendent.
You're correct. We'll make sure it's on the next month.
Okay. So it'll be fine to just go on the next month?
We'll have to do it on July.
Okay. Thank you. Good. I'm, Member Oswald, thank you. So it's been moved and seconded, seeing no other lights. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We may continue, Member Lethla Kemp.
Thank you. Okay. And then the, the next section is Data Sharing Agreements, and this is And this is regularly on our agenda. And it's requested that the following organizations be granted access to the student information system to support district functions from July 1st, 2016, to June 30, 2017. And there's a number of organizations that we've worked with over the years, including colleges and nonprofit organizations in the area. And then the next section is Diploma Request. And the following students have met all graduation requirements for the Duluth Public Schools and should be awarded a diploma. Miranda Rae Johnson LeBlanc, Jamise L. Turner, Lisa Flynn, Shayah M. Diver, Dolly Evans. And it's recommended that the Duluth School Board accept and approve above diploma requests. And I guess I'd just say, we will have the final diplomas are, the section on here for our other graduations in the next couple of months. And I won't be reading all of them. But we did get to shake everyone's hand, though. So it's recommended, again, that we accept and approve the above diploma requests. That is my report. I make a motion that we accept.
It's a move by Member Lefler Kemp?
Second.
Seconded by Member Oswald. Any discussion? Member Welty, what item would you like to discuss?
The resolution that we just passed, I know Assistant Superintendent Starzacki said she would have it added to our July. Is there any, would it make things easier if we just simply added it right now to this? And added it, or can you wait till July?
It was noted that it can wait. Any other discussion? Member Johnston?
One B, one.
I'd like to discuss one B, one. Member Sandsted. Two B, two. Two B, two. We'll go in order. Member Johnston, you may begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just some quick comments, so this is a good program. I appreciate all the work that the Assistant Superintendent, as well as all the staff, has put into this. This is a kind of third installment for what they're looking at to, I can summarize it, as improving school climate, reducing the achievement gap, improving graduation rates, and I think student achievement for all is a good summary of it. Just, these are all good things, which I wholeheartedly support. But just, but I do want to caution everybody, and we've already had this conversation with Assistant Superintendent Starzacki, that we want to see results, too. And we know that we're not just doing a process for the doing of process, but we're doing a process to get the results. And I'm very encouraged so far. But let's keep up that good work and hope you can report back in a year that we've had great success. So, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights on that topic, Member Sandsted.
Thank you. I just had what I think needs to be a change in this. So this is the 532 Use of Peace Officer Policy, second page 37. If we define the first one there, we've got student with IEP, or the student means a student who is eligible to release, receive special education. I think we don't want just the student included in there, because we use the student throughout this document, not necessarily referring to just students who have an IEP. So my proposal would be to cross out the student, or the student. It would just be student with IEP means a student who is. So that would be my proposed change there.
Are you moving that?
So I move we amend this policy to remove those three words.
There's a discussion from Assistant Superintendent Starzacki.
We will make note of that, and we'll have that change reflected. That had to do with the revision of moving it from, to all students, not just students with IEPs. So thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you. So it has been, there was a motion from Member Sandsted, a clarification on the motion. Do I have a second on the motion to amend?
Second.
Seconded by Member Lefler Kemp. Is there a discussion? Member Welty, does this have to do with that?
Yes, it does. Thinking about the wording to make sure that this works, there are a number of times in this particular policy where the word "student" is used. And I think the intent of that first sentence would be to make sure that whenever the word "just student" is used, it is understood in advance that we're talking about students with an IEP. Am I right or wrong in that?
Member, no, they, the policy was amended. It initially was named Removal Students with IEPs, and then it was changed to be, to address all, the whole student body. So it wasn't just singling out a certain portion of students. And so you're thinking of it backward.
I guess I read it, I'm not sure. What I see on top of page 38 in the first sentence, and this, begins with defining what it's meant. I'll just read the sentence. "When such measures fail or when a crisis team determines a student's behavior, thus student's behavior continues to endanger or may endanger the health and/or safety and property of the students." I think the term "the students" is a generic term that's used to define the students. And I think, I think it would actually be an error to remove the quotes "the students" from A. I'd like to clarify everything, but I do think that "the students" is a necessary clarification to stay in there because of the way the rest of the policy is worded.
Assistant Superintendent?
So going back to the initial comment, you were, I can't remember who brought it, Member Sandsted. Yes, this original document was for students with IEPs. And so that's why that definition was in there under A, to clarify that that referred to either student. But now that we've changed the intent of this policy, when it refers to student, it means general education or special education student. So we can clarify in point A, that when they speak of a student with an IEP, that means a student's receiving special education services. So I think that will be the only clarification we need to do, and it'll be okay.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Member Lefler Kemp?
Yes. I think I read this last month, too. But just again, maybe to help the audience understand what we're talking about, on page 36, the first page of this policy, it has the purpose. And the purpose of this policy is to describe the appropriate use of peace officers and crisis teams to use a restrictive procedure or remove, if necessary, a student. And we crossed out with an Individualized Education Program, IEP, from school grounds. This includes students with or without an Individualized Education Program, IEP. So it kind of summarizes it, I guess, for the audience.
All right. There's been a motion and a second for the amendment, and so we will vote on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Passes seven zero, and the whole piece, so we'll, we won't pass the whole policy, that was just the amendment. So, any further discussion on the Education Committee agenda? Seeing no lights. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes seven zero. Thank you very much, Member Lefler Kemp. Now we'll move on to the Human Resources Committee with Member Kirby.
Thank you. We met on last Monday, I believe. We had some staffing action items, and I'll go through those briefly. There were seven certified appointments and 55 certified extensions, which I believe were mostly summer school and Excel curriculum development positions. There were three certified leaves, one certified long-term sub, four certified resignations, two certified retirements, one certified temporary decrease, two non-certified appointments, six non-certified leaves, one non-certified permanent decrease, 11 non-certified resignations, seven non-certified retirements, and one non-certified temporary increase. A lot of things going on at the end of the year. Some of those were mentioned before. I'd like to thank the staff and the parents who took part in all of the principal hirings and all of the work that got involved. So I think all of us are looking forward to meeting those people. Then we had some placeholders. Now we have resolutions, and I think members of the board got those resolutions, which I will read now. Resolution HR 6-16-3372, RE, Termination of Certified Probationary, that is, non-tenured staff. Whereas during the first three years of consecutive employment, all teachers in the public schools in cities of the first class are deemed to be in a probational period of employment, during which period the school board may renew, or not renew, any teacher's annual contract as the school board shall see fit. The term "teacher" includes every person regularly employed as a principal, or to give instruction in a classroom, or to superintend or supervise classroom instruction, or as a placement teacher and visiting teacher. And now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, as follows. The employment contracts of the following probationary teachers shall not be renewed, and their employment shall terminate at the end of the school day on June 10th, 2016, unless another date is indicated below, in which case the employment of the particular teacher shall terminate on that date. One, two, three, four, five. And there are seven people identified there. Number two, be it further resolved, and the clerk of the school board shall notify such teachers in writing before July 1st, 2016, of the termination of their employment. And I move the passing of Resolution HR 6-16-3372.
It's been moved by Member Kirby. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Lefler Kemp. Any discussion? Member Oswald?
I just wanted to take note that of these seven names, there are two names of teachers on here that I know personally. And one of them includes my daughter's absolute favoritest math teacher of her entire life. And it makes me really sad that these names are even, have to be on this list. And I certainly hope that these teachers are rehired at some point, or find careers in other districts, because they are extremely talented. And this bears no reflection on how they perform. It truly makes me sad to see these names here.
It's a point of information from the superintendent.
I just want to note that some of these may be returning. Some of it is a process that is required of us to go through. And so it doesn't necessarily mean they won't be back.
Member Johnston?
Yeah, I was going to ask that same question in the past. We often go through and lay off or terminate, I guess, certain teachers. And I guess that same question, is that the same situation here?
Mr. Swarsky?
A little more specifics on that.
The names you see before you are there for a number of reasons. Some of these people taught on variances this last year, so they were teaching outside of their, what would be their normal area. And those variances are only good for one year. And not having enough FTE in these other areas of their regular licensures, that's why these names are on here. And again, I'm just trying to take a look at some of these. Again, most of them are some of the variances. Some of them were in the, their licensed areas, where we might have had a teacher or two returning from a mid-career leave or another leave. And that would displace them from that area, as well as a teacher who was on a temporary assignment. And a temporary assignment would be, let's say, a teacher leaving after the beginning of the year, and we didn't do a formal posting for it, and we put a person in there for the remainder of the year. It's not quite a long-term sub. They do have rights to apply for positions, but unfortunately, we do have to notify them before July 1st whether they are returning next year. If we don't have the room for them at this time, which we may have later in August, we do have to notify them at this time.
Thank you for your clarification. Member Johnston?
Yeah, just, is this going to result in a change in the FTEs of our teaching staff, increase or decrease?
Mr. Swarsky?
This number, actually, on this resolution and the next resolution coming up are very similar to last year. I was really surprised when I was working through this process. It's not a big change. It's almost identical.
Thank you for the clarification, Member Johnston.
Yeah, I know, we do this. I really don't like it. It seems to be, I don't like the wording, but I know it is done that way. Probably vote for this, but I'm hoping that these teachers can come back if we have room for them, if they're qualified.
Here we have many things that we don't have to like, but it's also the process of our duties as a board. So it has been, seeing no further lights. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes seven zero. The next resolution, please, Member Kirby.
Okay. The next resolution, as Mr. Swarsky said, was similar. This is Resolution HR 6-16-3373, Termination of Certified Hourly Staff. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 709, St. Louis County, Minnesota, that the employment of the following hourly teachers shall terminate effective at the end of the school day on June 10th, 2016, unless another date is indicated below, in which case the employment of the individual shall terminate on that date. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the school board shall notify such teachers in writing before July 1st, 2016, of the termination of their employment. And there are 10 such individuals. So I move the passing of Resolution HR 6-16-3373.
It's been moved by Member Kirby, seconded by Member Sandsted. Any discussion? Member Johnston?
Same concerns I have on this one, just another question is, what's the difference between the certified hourly staff and certified tenured staff?
Mr. Swarsky?
The certified hourly are teachers who perform between 14 and 20 hours, so less than 20, more than 14 hours a week. They don't have continuing contract rights, so on an hourly basis, every year, they are terminated. And I can, at a quick glance on here, I know there are four or five of these individuals who we rehired back from last year. So it is not uncommon for them to come back. A number of these are retired teachers who are serving in our Title I programs in some of our schools.
Thank you for the clarification. Seeing no further lights. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes seven zero. Member Kirby may continue with the report.
There was another placeholder about termination of certified tenure staff, of which there were none, so we don't need to act on that. We discussed the Continuous Improvement Team, which the administration is putting together, and they were awarded $500 stipend for that. Some informational items were also discussed, a minimum wage increase for certain members. And we discussed that this is also a national item of interest. And there was a request for a review of the superintendent evaluation process. And after some discussion of that, it was agreed that Mr. Swarsky would provide us with some information on the current process of superintendent evaluation. So the three of us who have not been a participant in that in the past can do so. And that would be brought to us at the next meeting. And that's it for the report. I move the adoption of the Human Resources Report.
It's been moved by Member Welty. I mean, sorry. Moved by Member Kirby, seconded by Member Sandsted. And we have some discussion. Member Welty, what item would you like to discuss?
It's a small item. Item three, the approval of Continuous Improvement Team stipend, $500 is very modest. Does it require a resolution, or is that something that we can just have the superintendent and staff? Okay.
It's part of the budget. It was a part of the budgeted process.
It was part of the budget.
Yeah, that was part of the considerations that we had on the first page of the presentation that we were giving them a number of times. Member Lefler Kemp?
I just wanted to make a comment, again, maybe more for the audience, on the area of the superintendent evaluation process. We all are part of the Minnesota School Board Association and have had opportunities to attend a number- Association and have had opportunities to attend a number of different trainings and receive information on superintendent evaluation processes around the state and country, and Member Oswald and I have recently, and Member Kirby, have recently attended one, and so we will be including that in the discussion, but what we thought was important in the discussion that was held at the HR Committee was, we have a process that's been in place. We have three new Board members that have not been a part of that process, and it will be a good opportunity for them to kind of understand more what we're currently doing as well. And we've had a good process in place from attending these trainings. I know that we're doing a lot of good things right, but it'll be good to review it. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
I'd like to pull item four A.
Okay, you're pulling four A. Member Oswald?
I'd like to pull four B.
Four B. Member Johnston, four A.
Sure. First, a point of information. We don't have a copy of this. We were given it to us at the Human Resource Meeting, and I guess I would like to make a motion to change that. And my motion is to take all the colored items that were handed out and increase those by $1 per hour.
Are you looking to make an amendment?
Amendment. I'd like to amend the handout that we got. Amended by, it wasn't very well clear on this, but what I was given was that we had a handout, which is this, with some colored numbers, or some colored data on it, which is wages that are paid to certain staff, and we were told I was going to add 50 cents to those that were colored. And my motion is to add $1 to those that are colored.
Mr. Swarsky?
I'll pass that for the sake of discussion.
Seconded by Member Welty.
Yeah, at this point in time, for this month, this was informational. It is going to be brought before the Board for adoption next month. I'm assuming you're making a recommendation for next month that we would bring forward to the committee meeting on that Monday.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I withdraw that motion if I could, then we'll talk about it next month. Appreciate that clarification.
Just to note that we would make sure to look at the difference in the two of what that would be, that we would make sure that we're presented both options.
Yes. What, and I do not have a problem with what Member Johnston is proposing. The one bigger impact is, we talk about salary compression. So, once, if you raise one area too big, there's some peripheral salaries that also have to be observed and maybe moved also. So, for instance, there's a special ed paraprofessional, and there's an instructional paraprofessional, and if they're too close, an instructional paraprofessional generally is not as demanding as a special ed paraprofessional, and if you make those salaries too similar, you may have a shortage of people wanting to sub in those other areas. And that's one other thing. I'd just be clear, most of these hourly rates in here are for our substitutes, not for our standard contract employees, but it is inching up towards that.
And I'm just, to make sure that wages are set and those pieces are set during the bargaining process each time. I see you nodding yes. So, thank you. All right, moving on to the next piece. Member Oswald?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on this, as I was the member that brought this forward, because I've watched over the past few years as a member of the community, and to see the tension and the angst that come about from evaluating our fearless leader and our superintendent, and I think we can do better and avoid a lot of that kind of atmosphere by changing our evaluation policy, which I, or our evaluation document, which I have had a copy of from Mr. Swarsky and have reviewed it, and it is pretty plain and pretty generic, and it's pretty useful in a lot of ways, but it can create a lot of differences among the Board, and I really want to change it to be a factually based document. Per the instruction from our MSBA trainings that Member Lefler Kemp has referenced, they say we should have it aligned with our continuous improvement plans and other district goals and goals we set as a Board, and have it be pretty clear-cut and factually based. Do you meet this goal? Yes, no, partially. Why, why not? And it takes a lot of the other stuff that can get mixed into that kind of evaluation out of the equation, and to allow us to see progress and document progress. And that is my goal and desire in wanting to set some goals. We don't have district-specific goals that I'm aware of within this document. It's pretty much just photocopied from the site it comes from, and that's why I want to do this. I think it's, can be a very valuable tool to drive our district forward and create change and evaluate ourselves, not only our superintendent, but us as a Board also, and encourage us to always stay focused on the goals and not the people around it. And I think it's just time to update, more or less, because it's the same document for the last few years. We look forward to an update from Mr. Swarsky next month to make sure that everyone is on board with the process. I do know that when we do changes superintendent's evaluation, we do it alongside the superintendent. It is a discussion with them. I know, from what I understand from a number of discussions over the last number of years on the Board that that's been the process, and if we were to put, it wouldn't be, if we were to change it now, it wouldn't go into place for this fall. It would actually be in place for the following fall, because it's unfair to set and change an evaluation midstream. As educators, we want to make sure that if we're evaluating things, we're doing it with evidence-based practice. So, we do it in the coming year. So, more to come in the coming month. All right, seeing no other lights on the Human Resources Committee agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passage passes seven zero. At this time, we will take a three-minute break and be back at seven forty-eight. Ready for your show? All right, thank you. Member Sandsted, if you could please continue with our Business Committee agenda.
Sure thing, Chair Harla. We met as the Business Committee a week ago, and we had the usual financial reports to look through. We had some RFPs to go over, and those were with regard to high school yearbooks. There were a couple of vendors who put in bids on yearbooks for East High School, and Jostens was selected and recommended that we approve the RFP from Jostens for July one, 2016, through June thirtieth, 2020, with annual renewals. And for Denfeld, there were similar responses, and it is also recommended that we approve the RFP for proposals from Jostens for the period of July one, 2016, through June thirty, 2020, for Denfeld's yearbook as well. We had two quotes that we reviewed. The first one was refuse removal and recycling services, and it's recommended that the Duluth School Board approve entering into a contract with waste management based on their quote estimated value of $69,300 approximately. And we also had a quote on carpentry labor. Quotes were solicited from eight contractors, and two were received in response, and it's recommended that we approve entering into a contract with Donald Home Construction Company for total estimated value of $28,000. So, those were our quotes. We had one, no, two policies regarding busing that we reviewed this month, and the first one is on page forty-eight, and it is with regard to transportation of non-public school students, and this is a very statute-heavy policy that essentially lays out what our obligations are according to state law with regard to students who reside in the district and depending on where they're heading. And so, it's recommended that we approve that policy for the first reading. The second policy is on page fifty-one, which is a new policy as well, and it comes from the MSBA policy, model policy, and it's with regard to video recording on school buses. And it is recommended that we approve that policy for the first reading as well, and there was a little bit of discussion about both of these in terms of what we do provide in terms of transportation. I think we're going to be getting a little bit more information on that, and then the use of video recording and how that practice is happening at the moment, and it really is generally based upon when it's needed. Moving on, we have one contract that was a renewal of the Duluth Heritage Sports Center contract, and that is for September first, 2016, to June thirtieth, 2017, and that is for the use of the Heritage Sports Center for our hockey games and practices, I presume. Not having hockey kids yet of my own. I learned about this, but both East and Denfeld use the Heritage Sports Center. Both boys and girls teams use the facility, so we are continuing that. And then, we have a second contract that members you got as a handout tonight regarding the lease of vehicles for the driver's education program, and we passed something on this last month, I believe, and it didn't quite work out the contract we had. So, this is the new proposal that's been put together in time to ensure our driver's ed program can have access to these vehicles, and I'm going to ask Mr. Hanson to give us a little bit more detail on this since it's brand-new. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, thank you, Member Sandsted. As was indicated, this is our current agreement with Freeway Auto Center LLC, and there's, it's changed a little bit from last month. It's still three cars for a period of three years. Total cost on this item is just over $33,000. The, it's a little more expensive than the prior item that we brought to you last month, in part because we have a different car here. The crash test ratings on this particular model are something that we had a stronger preference for, and in addition, I believe that we had a reduction in some of the rebates that were formerly out there previously. Good news for us is that this is still a couple thousand dollars less over the three-year period than what we're currently paying on our month-to-month leases that we've been using for several years. So, it's still a little bit of a cost reduction to the program.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Moving on, number five, we have several resolutions here. The first one is our standard acceptance of donations to Duluth Public Schools, and so I will read that at this time. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 requires the school district to accept donations by resolution expressed in the terms prescribed by the donor in full, and whereas acceptance of the donations in accordance with the donor's terms is in the best interest of the Duluth Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Duluth Public Schools does accept the below-described donations from said organizations in accordance with terms set forth herein. Be it further resolved that the Duluth Public Schools wishes to extend its grateful appreciation to these various organizations. And so, we've got a list of, oh, twenty or so different donations to Lincoln Park, Laura MacArthur, Lester Park, Homecroft, and Denfeld, totaling about $7,500 for choir concerts, for Wolfridge trips, for kindergarten busing, all sorts of things. So, I move Resolution B-six sixteen dash thirty-three seventy-five.
Second? Moved by Member Sandsted, seconded by Member Welty. Discussion, Mr. Grandseth?
I just wanted to take special note of one of the items, and that is the box tops for education. For, this one is actually from Laura MacArthur for $1,163.70, and that is the box tops that comes off of your cereal boxes. And I know that most of us probably have some cereal in the cupboard, and sometimes we don't always think about that little pink square on the top or the side of the box, and if you collect those and send them to school with our kids, or just drop them off at a school office, those add up over time. As you can see here, it's $1,100 that Laura Mac is getting for box tops. So, that's a way that all of us can do something pretty easy and help our schools.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes seven zero.
Okay, the next resolution is adoption of the fiscal year 2017 budget, and we spent a lot of time on this over the last three, maybe even four months. We had several meetings, Committee of the Whole meetings on this, and worked through some changes. Were able to address the concerns of students who were concerned about zero hour, which is not being reduced, and really appreciate the work of administration to maintain our student-to-teacher ratio and not have any increase there, and to make choices that will continue to provide great services and not have any reduction to our program offerings. So, well, there was one other thing I wanted to highlight in the budget. We are, since the last meeting, there's been one more adjustment that there's going to be $10,000 to the American Indian Education Program, which I think is an important partnership with our department that gets a lot of outside funding, or most of the funding comes from external sources, but that we are investing some of our general fund dollars, I think is a really important partnership for us. So, with that, be it resolved by the School Board of School District Number 709, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the fiscal year 2017 budget as presented to the School Board be adopted. I move Resolution B-six sixteen thirty-three seventy-six.
Second? Moved by Member Sandsted, seconded by Member Lefler Kemp. Discussion, Member Welty.
Yes, we did have a very good discussion at the Committee of the Whole, and one of the questions that I asked was roughly what our reserve is, and was told that it was roughly 2% of our total annual budget. I have, for the past month, been looking at a policy that another Board member pointed out to us, and it's one that I'm quite aware of because it originally passed with me voting for it back in 1997. It's thirty-seventeen general fund reserve balance. This is the reserve, this is the policy that requires the School Board to have a 10% cushion over and above its budget for unfortunate fiscal crises that might rise up. Perhaps the thing that I should note about this is that any reduction of 10%, or from 10%, in the above-named general fund reserve may only be made through Board resolution voted upon by a two-thirds majority of members of the School Board. I believe that we went under the 10% at some point when, after Art Johnston joined the School Board, and I don't believe we have ever had a vote of this sort of two-thirds to allow us to go below 2%. That came from a period of time in which our School Board paid scant attention to its policies, so here we are with a 2% budget reserve. Frankly, I think the 10% is too much. 5% probably makes more sense. Now, about this particular resolution to adopt this budget, I've already just mentioned the one disagreeable fact that our Board has not paid attention to its obligation with regards to the reserve. Since we violated the policy and we're here, there's nothing much we can do about it until we are able to build that reserve up at some point in the future, or reconsider whether we want it to be a 10% reserve. The budget that we have here is bare bones. It's very simple. When I was on the Board, we used to get about a two-inch-thick budget, everything, far more than any accountant can. than any accountant could manage to look through unless they were given a good month or two to do so and add everything up. I did comment about this, these are very, they strike me as incomplete. One of the things it does not include, for instance, is the roughly thirty million dollars that we are spending annually to pay off the long-range facilities plan. Perhaps that does not have to be in our budget, but it is money that we, as School Board members, are responsible for overseeing. And I also realize that this budget, the one that's causing us to transfer three million, three point three million dollars from our general fund that could be used in the classroom to pay off debt servicing for the long-range facilities plan, is not this Board's fault. It's the fault of the School Boards over the last ten years who obligated us to use the general fund money to pay off our debt service and then spent down our budget reserves so that it's only two percent now. We were advised in a meeting last week by experts that we have no options to raise additional monies, and so the budget reserve and the transfer from the general fund is not something that we're going to be able to do anything about if those experts were correct. It's only going to take, I realize that in the, in state law, we, as a School Board, are obligated to pass this budget in June, and it will only require a simple majority to approve the budget this meeting or before June is over with. I just want everybody to know that I will not be part of that majority. I will not be voting for this particular budget. It's my lame protest vote for everything that led up to what I still regard as a fiscal catastrophe.
Just a note to folks that there are pieces of the budget that our Board approves throughout the year. This is one piece of the budget, but also when we do our ten-year capital facilities plan, when we are approving grants for different budget areas, that actually builds our entire budget. So as a Board, we have a number of documents that probably made up that document that you were referring to, Member Welty. And so understand your views for that, but just want to make sure that we know that each month we are addressing different pieces of the budget, so it's important for us to know that. Member Oswald.
Thank you, Chair Harla. I'd just like to respond to the separate pieces. As a new Board member, we never ever see the complete picture altogether when we see and pass them, all these little pieces. And that's, I think, where we miss connecting the dots and see how funds interact with each other and how our decisions one month can affect the bottom line, let's say in June, when we're looking at making cuts in the unrestricted general fund. I consider myself a relatively intelligent person, and yet I looked at this first page of this packet, and I am so confused. And I don't have a lot of time to process this, but if I would have been able to see this document at a committee meeting, I wouldn't have to sit and ask these questions right here. And I need to know these answers because I don't know if I'm voting to approve this or not. It depends on these answers. The very first thing is, in February, when we sat down, I sat down to one sheet of paper, and it had, I believe, three point four, three point three million dollar deficit, and that's what we were going to be grappling with. So then I look at this, and this is telling me that we have a three point six million dollar deficit we're grappling with. I don't know why there aren't matching numbers. I don't get that. I don't understand. This document on page one shows me directly that we're transferring three point three, well, three million, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of the unrestricted general fund and into the capital fund. That is to pay for our buildings. That three point three million dollars, if you divide that by ninety-six thousand dollars per full-time FTE per teacher, equals over thirty-five teachers that we're not hiring, that we're not using because we're paying for our buildings. These are debts we have to pay. It's stuff from before me. I understand we have to pay it, but it hurts to see and hear teachers complaining about class sizes and programs that they have to miss and extra credit opportunities such as a different schedule to allow them to take more classes. This is three point three million dollars to do that with, and yet we're paying for our buildings because of prior Board's inability to figure this out, so we didn't have to rob the classroom to pay for the bricks and the mortar. I don't understand how they ignore their fiduciary responsibility and the policies and rules. If we're not going to follow our own rules and our own policies, then why have them? Granted, this policy passed last, passed, and I believe, where is it, two thousand and three, the policy thirty-seventeen for the general reserve balance. It's been thirteen years. Why hasn't this been reviewed? Again, it might not be relevant to us today. Maybe we need to bring it down to five percent. We haven't had the opportunity to have that discussion still. We're at less than two percent from what I've, from the answers I have gathered for our general reserve balance, and that's not acceptable. So I view voting in favor of this budget as of me ignoring the rule and continuing that pattern. I may have to, because I know there's no way we can actually fix that general reserve fund. It's just not possible. We're already cutting this amount. We'd have to cut that much more to put it in savings. It's hard, because all of these cuts we're making are people. There are people's passions. There's people's programs. There's kids' educations at stake. I don't know what to do when I can't even understand my own document, and I'm trying. My sense is to stick with the rules, and that's where I feel like I need to understand things more. So if anyone can add to this discussion on why I shouldn't follow these rules, including policy thirty-oh-five and thirty-ten, please convince me, because I want to move forward. I want to do better. I want to do things, but it takes me being reserved and following the rules rather than wishing and hoping and having dreams in front of me that rest in the balance of some whim. I want to have a reason to say, and look at these people and tell them why they can't have seven hours a day, or to tell any of these teachers that we laid off that we could have had you and more. I want to be confident in that, and I need help.
Member Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am sure some of the concerns that were already mentioned, I do have a question, I guess I would like to question probably to Mr. Hanson, is where did the three million, three hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars come from?
Mr. Hanson.
Which is the, listed as a transfer from the general fund to the capital fund, which is, and could you, I'm not sure, was it, Member Oswald correct in saying this, what it's for?
I'm going to go back to your first question. The source for these funds are operating savings that we no longer incur from operating fewer schools than we used to have. So, for example, we've discussed this before, the heating bill at Woodland Middle School, we no longer pay a heating bill at Woodland Middle School. We no longer pay a principal salary for being there. We run one less high school, having moved from three high schools to two. There's a whole list of items that actually add up to much more than three point four million dollars. We specifically earmarked those savings for this, for paying these debt obligations that are paid from the general fund. So, and again, the source is the savings that we no longer expend money on. The choice before was to do that, or one choice was to do it that way, or those savings could have been used for budget relief, you know, in those years prior, because as we all know, this district and many others in the state of Minnesota have had deficit budget situations on an annual basis from long before there was ever a long-range facilities plan. So that money could have been spent for deficit relief in those earlier years, and then the option would have been to somehow collect that from the, you know, through the debt levy, or, you know, whatever other means could have been available, depending on statute. So I hope that answers your question. That's the source of those funds.
I was actually saying, thank you for that, but I was also asking specifically, where did the three million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand and nine hundred and thirty-five, how was that computed, and where did that, that specific number, how was that generated?
It's the amount due per the amortization schedules on the three bond issues that are paid from general fund.
Thank you. That's what Member Oswald thought. I just went back and looked at our previous budgets. I've been on, this is my seventh budget that I've done. And in all previous budgets that I've had, going back to two thousand, I believe, eleven, that number, the transfer number, there's always a transfer number. That number was pulled directly out of the review on comment from two thousand and nine, or two thousand and ten, I believe it is. And for example, in two thousand and fourteen, it was six million dollars. Two thousand and fifteen, it was six point three million dollars. Last year, it dropped down to four million dollars. This year's down to that three point four million dollars. So in the past, that never matched the three debt obligations that we had to pay. It was a number pulled directly out of an eight-year-old document, which had increased, I think, three percent per year. So why did that change from taking that generated savings, that was generated, I believe, eight or ten years ago? Why did that change then to only changing it to what the three bonds that are, or the three CLPs that are now due?
The, part of the deficit resolution issue from last year was resolved using part of those by reducing this amount, and then it took another step this year for the same reason.
Okay, well, I certainly have long advocated that we should not be pulling money out of the general fund to pay for bonds. We'll be talking about that in our next resolution. One thing that piqued my interest, I went back and looked, and this is relating to the budget, I want to see how our current budget relates to the future budget we're doing. Back on page two of the business report, which is a statement of revenues and expenditures, right at the start of the report. A couple, a couple of things I've noticed on that, and I went back, is pretty, pretty common through the years I've been on the Board. Both the adopted revenues are usually go up every year by a fair amount, I mean, not an exact amount, but it does seem to increase usually, as well as the expenditures go up. This time, the expenditures went up about four million. For this, this is what I'm talking about, the audience here, for this year's budget, I'm just trying to find out how this would maybe apply to next year's budget. There's quite a bit of difference, and I believe that the expenditures are about seven million dollars higher than the revenues. I believe some of that is due to the, because we are building the, we are still building the long-range facility plan, so those expenditures have been higher in the past as well. But when we have such a difference between revenues and expenditures by seven million dollars, is that at all reflected in our budget for this year? Or where does that, where will that, what I call a deficit, even though I know it's somewhat based on the long-range facility plan, finishing up the project, but how is that difference reconciled? We obviously can't have a seven million dollar deficit every year.
Now, the deficit that you're referring to, in this case, that report on page two is for all funds, and so the deficit that you're referencing there largely comes from two sources, first being the Building Construction Fund, which spends money that was, recognizes revenue in prior years. And so that's over four million dollars of that seven million dollar difference that you're talking about. The other place I go to right away is to the Debt Service Fund, which has a, again, has the same situation where the debt payments, we don't need to, well, there's several complex comments here, but we levy more than the debt payments that we're going to have just to make sure that we have enough in the bank to make the debt payments. And that's a state law. MDE sets us up for that. And so the difference here is just under two million for, again, debt payments that will be made with revenues that were collected in a prior year.
Just if I could, if you could correlate that and all back to our current budget, do any of these numbers mean anything? I'm looking on the first page of our budget that we're being asked to approve. We're looking at a three point six million dollar, I'll call it a deficit, again, the difference between the revenues and expenditures. So does these numbers in the past, did they have anything to do with this, or are they independent?
The budget information that you're looking at for fiscal year seventeen, we have some similar circumstances there, but they are totally independent calculations. But again, the, if you look at the Building Construction Fund, there's a deficit there of one and a half million dollars. Debt Service Fund, one point six million dollars, so three point one million or so out of that three point six million that you're citing in total. And again, it's because that we collected revenues in prior years that are now being spent to support the plans in those two areas.
Thank you for that explanation. It is very confusing, and I certainly made a mistake here, which will come up in the next resolution, thinking that we could somehow refinance our debts, and we're now told we can't because of state law. But I am concerned about the, the budget has always been confusing, particularly with the long-range facility plan. I'll use the analogy, I think I used it at one of the committee meetings, as the budget, remember, I've been on the Board for seven years. It seems like we get all those numbers, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, just piled on our desk, and we have to figure out some way to put it together, and we don't even know what the picture's supposed to look like. And I've been on this for seven years, and I still have a very difficult time following the things that happen. Maybe that's the human condition, I don't know. I'm going to make a motion on this. I move to amend Resolution B-six-sixteen-three-three-seventy-six, adoption of fiscal year seventeen budget, by deleting on page one the general fund unrestricted negative three million, three hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars under the transfer column, and by deleting the capital fund, positive three million, three hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars under the transfer column.
It's been moved by Member Johnston, seconded by Member Welty.
It's been moved by Member Johnston, seconded by Member Welty. Any discussion with regard to the motion? Member Sandstad.
I would ask that Mr. Hanson explain the implications of deleting this transfer.
Mr. Hanson.
The, uh, the debt is subject to annual appropriation, and that's what you're doing here tonight by considering this budget. Uh, it would be my strong recommendation that you not pass this resolution, or this amendment to the resolution, um, because what will happen is we'll default on those three issues that, uh, exist to support portions of long-range facilities plan. And, uh, the money will come due, and those people that have a right to will come and get their, uh, they'll come and get their investment any way they possibly can.
Um, I see lights from Member Welty, Member Letherton, Member Oswald. Is this directly related to the amendment, or I think this was a prior one? So I'll keep your names in this, if you want to turn your lights off, and I'll have, I'll call on you in order, um, beyond. So if you have a comment with regard to the amendment deletion that Member Johnston had done, Member Sandstad.
Um, I don't support us not paying our debts. I think that, uh, probably all of us have some, um, disagreement with decisions that were made in the past that we're paying for now, but, uh, we as a board have obligations to, um, properly manage the budget of the school district, and, um, not paying our debts would be a terrible move, um, for any future, um, investments we seek to make.
Thank you. Member Johnston.
Sure as a member making this motion, uh, I went back and looked at what's happened in the past since I've been on the board. And I've told these numbers before, but I'll mention them again. Of two thousand nine A, one of our CLPs, we have so far spent thirteen million dollars from the general fund. Back in two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen, by board resolution. Two thousand nine B, two thousand ten D, and now two thousand twelve B, uh, are also, by the way they were written, are coming out of the general fund. Uh, so far, of those three, uh, two thousand nine B has totaled almost nineteen million dollars, two thousand ten D, one million dollars, two thousand twelve B, which has just started, uh, one point five million dollars. Total of that that we've pulled out of the general fund to pay for these, uh, debt obligations is thirty-four million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Uh, as Member Oswald, uh, pointed out, the current transfer we're doing, uh, today is three point three million dollars, which is about thirty-five teachers. If we look at the thirty-four million dollars that we've pulled out since this has started, uh, that's, uh, uh, what's that, about a hundred teachers, or more. And I think that it's time that we as a community, we as a school board, start, um, holding the people that made this plan accountable, and that, and know we, of course, we will pay our debts. This is not a question of whether or not we're gonna pay our debts, it's a question of whether or not we're gonna pay it from the general fund or not. Another three point three million dollars, which has been going on, remember, up to two years ago, was flat, eminently denied that we were even doing this. That's one of those jigsaw puzzles that were really hard to put together. Uh, we see now, we, I wanna put seven, seven periods back. I want to have more counselors to help reduce the achievement gap, to give more counseling to things like, uh, uh, suicide prevention, so many of the other programs that, that we, as a school, must start implementing if we're going to succeed as a school. So I have put this resolution up to force the administration, force our bond people that have got us into this situation, uh, to deal with it. Was, we'll be talking about this in the next resolution, a little more detail, but was mentioned that, uh, there's, uh, some state laws that were interpreted that we cannot stop this transfer. Well, I think it's time that we as a board, we have no choice, it's time we stop this transfer. The only way to do it is to stop the transfer. And we will do what we can, I will work what I can with the, with the legislature to, first of all, find out whether or not that's true. And secondly, if it is, to make sure we get a variance so we can, uh, stop transferring this money, and we can, so we can truly refine on our debt, not do a little piecemeal thing that we're gonna, uh, keep losing more and more money every year. In fact, it looks like if we don't stop this, by the time all these debts are paid, we're gonna be paying something like eighty million dollars out of the general fund. How can we as a school afford that? We wanna deal with the most, we wanna deal with seven periods, we wanna deal with decreasing enrollment. The only way we can do that is to take a firm stand now and say, enough is enough, we will not transfer any money anymore. And that's what I'm advocating, that's why I proposed this motion.
Member Johnston, I understand your...
Objection. I, I believe that we have a discussion here, the chair, going to interject herself into the discussion, or allow us to speak...
Member Welty, your night is, your light is not on. You would say point of, you would say interjection, and then you would wait for, to be called on.
Point of order.
Member Sandstad, your light is next. Call the question. There is a light on that, Member... Actually, the question has been called, so there has been a, there's a motion on the call, there's a motion on the floor to call the question. Um, all those in favor of calling the question?
No.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The, calling the question passes four to three. We will, uh...
Point of order.
Member Johnston?
Calling the question requires a two-thirds majority to be successful.
Let me see. Do you have that little thing?
That's true.
Where do we go for it? I don't have my little cheat sheet. Here we go.
Thank you, Chair Harla. Um, I was going to explain that I fully agree with, uh, with Member Sandstad, that I do believe that we have to pay our debts. In fact, while I intend to vote against the budget, I was inclined, and I probably will vote against the resolution that, uh, Member Johnston has brought to, for us to discuss, even though I seconded it for the sake of discussion, which fortunately, we are able to continue. This is a particularly galling point with me because this money is coming out of the general fund, and as Mr. Hanson explained, this is all considered, or treated as, or called savings based upon the, uh, the hopes and dreams of the school board, uh, eight, nine years ago, that went to the Department of Education and said we were gonna save five million dollars a year. Mr. Hanson, I have a question for you to, uh, to help me think through whether I will vote for or against this, and that is this. Do you consider an increase in students in the classrooms that were once thirty-one, thirty-two, and now are thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty? Do you consider that savings?
There was no assumption about any of that relative to the savings that were calculated as part of the long-range facilities plan.
In other words, we calculated that we would be saving five million dollars a year, and whether we actually found savings through, uh, more efficient heating and cooling, and , uh, smaller need for teachers, uh, because of the consolidation of the schools, uh, we have to, we have to find that, we have to find that five million dollars even if there is no savings. Would that be accurate? We have a category called savings, and we're drawing from that...
Member Welty, I would ask for order, the, our staff member was, was taking a moment to think. Give him a moment in that, uh, in respect. Thank you.
The savings largely comes from operating fewer school buildings. That's the savings. There was no change in any, uh, there was no assumption of any change, for example, relative to teaching ratios that would generate a change, because we put the same ratio in effect, um, for that calculation, uh, as existed before. So, uh, if you have a hundred students and they're, and they reside in fewer buildings, um, you're still gonna have, uh, the same number of FTE allocated to that to provide the teaching for those students.
But we have raised the, uh, the, the number of children in classrooms, even though sometimes it's because the schools have uneven, uh, enrollments.
We have done that, uh, prior to the long-range facilities pa, plan, and since the long-range facilities plan to add, address budget deficits and the, uh, board's desires for, uh, balanced budgets.
Um, I know that we've had some stories in the New York Tribune about there being less savings in terms of energy and, and, and other ways. I am concerned that we call this savings from the long-range facilities plan when they, they no longer are fully savings, and they actually are cutting into the meat and the gristle and the bones of the, uh, the education process. So when, when Member Johnston asked about this, and you mentioned savings, I, I just have a hard time believing that we are, are having five million dollars' worth of savings when we've added so many more kids to so many classrooms, especially on the secondary level.
Member Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let's talk a little bit about the savings. The savings were generated in theory back in the original review on comment back in two thousand, I believe, seven. Uh, those savings were estimated to be five million dollars a year once the long-range plan was implemented, uh, when that was, it was supposed to have been fully implemented, I believe, in, what, two thousand twelve? At that point, it was automatically increased by three percent every year, and it currently still is. Uh, two years ago, I put forth, uh, discussion item for this board, where I questioned that whether those savings, five million dollars, were accurate. I asked for an audit of those savings. That's never happened. My best estimate, based on my skill as an engineer and working things like heating systems, uh, were that at most the savings maybe were half that. But more important is that if we had a savings, this was whoever dreamed this up, say it was accurate, we have a problem in our schools with decreasing enrollment, with high, uh, teacher racial, student-teacher ratios. And so if we have a savings, let's assume that we do, let's accept that, what are we gonna do with those savings? The long-range facility plan had those savings to go, to be paid out of the general fund and pay for debts. Now, if I could have written the long-range facility plan, which is what I'm advocating for now, that we change, is that any savings, even if we have them, let's assume we have some, that those savings would be put back into the classrooms, would help out our children, help out our teachers, uh, help out everything from changing the most to getting seven-period days back. And remember, we pulled, uh, as of this year, we've pulled thirty-four million dollars out of the general fund to pay for these debts. So my thought is that even if there was savings, let's assume there was savings, I don't think there was, but let's assume there was, we as a board should be putting any of those savings back into the classrooms and expanding our classrooms, not using it to pay debts, and taking away from the classroom, certainly potentially taking away from the classroom. So that is why I am finally taking the bold move here to make a resolution to stop this transfer once and for all. I would also like to, people that are concerned about the legality of such a thing, I think that, uh, if people are concerned about that, this is, the administration has got us into this situation, the administration can find a way to get us out of it. Uh, they're the experts, I hear. Uh, so, I think that it's time that we, we, if, if the administration doesn't wanna put this up in hiring a hundred or thirty teachers, like Member Oswald said, we can hold on to that money until we can be assured from the legislature that the legislature is going to do our wishes, which is, allow us to refinance our debts, all of our debt, not just one little piecemeal, and that which would result in saving us millions of dollars a year, and, and allow us to pay for these debts out of the tax burden we have without raising taxes. We've, I've showed everybody the data on that. Uh, we can do that if we have any wherewithal to do it. And this is a first step. So again, I'm asking the board here to, uh, vote, uh, yes on my motion to stop this transfer.
Member Oswald?
Mr. Hanson, what fund do we currently pay our utilities out of for our buildings?
Largely from the, uh, general fund.
From the unrestricted general fund?
Correct.
And how can we come up with utility money that we would have spent on buildings that don't exist, when we've already cut money out of a budget to cover that? We've had to make budget cuts before and reduce our budgets, and so it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, knowing that we've already cut things out of budgets, and so we still say that this would be money that we would be paying those buildings for, or paying the utilities in those buildings for. It's just, it's hard for me to, to wrap my head around it, because that would be more restricted funds, wouldn't it? Rather than unrestricted funds?
Uh, no, the source is still, uh, Fund One Unrestricted. Um, you know, again, those savings were, it's a matter of, uh, earmarking the savings and the use thereof to the specific purpose that you want to. And in this case, the purpose was to make these debt payments. In other years, as I mentioned before, the, uh, um, earmarked purpose of specific savings, um, many times was for, um, budget deficit relief. Um, and a lot of times, that ended up in conversations, uh, about, uh, closing school buildings, that, for many years, that was a pretty consistent topic, year to year. It would be a matter of, you know, which buildings were closed, and, uh, or at least discussed for closing. And so it's a matter of, uh, Member Oswald, to answer your question, it really is, where are the savings earmarked to go? What are they earmarked to be used for? In this case, they were used to pay, uh, debt obligations, um, and, uh, in other years, they would have been used to, uh, address deficits.
And so can you tell me what, um, the amount will be next year from the amortization schedule to pay the bond payments that will be transferred from our general fund into the capital fund?
I don't have the number right in front of me, but I would say that, uh, um, there may be a slight increase, but I'm just gonna say approximately three point four million. may be a slight increase, but I'm just gonna say approximately three-point-four million.
And so we're going to be looking at a three-point-four million dollar deficit next year? Is that the way I'm reading it, since we had a three-point-three million dollar deficit this year, to make that, that transfer? Is it appropriate for me to think that we'll always have a deficit equal to the amount of our amortization schedule payment?
No, that's, uh, coincidence and does not relate to each other.
Okay, thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Um, I know, um, I, I was a teacher at the time when, uh, discussions of financing the long-range facilities plan were going on, and, um, I've spent a lot of time catching up over the last, uh, I don't know, five, six years that I've been at the district-level administration. And I know that, uh, much of the savings that was booked is because we, we closed a high school, we closed one and a half middle schools, we closed several elementaries, and each of those buildings had, uh, principal and clerical and lunch staff and custodial staff and, uh, many other, um, staff members that we have one of, frankly. And so that's where a lot of that, that booked savings came from. Um, but in closing a high school, it, it also, you, you reduce a football team and a hockey team and all the, the extra things that go along with a high school. You, you make those reductions, and, um, you're right, it, it is sad to, to see those things go, but they are things that we're, we're not paying for anymore. Um, you know, if we had a time machine, we, we might go back and make some changes, but, uh, right now, we, we can't go back and make those changes. We are obligated to, uh, to pay our bills, and, um, although it was past boards that made those decisions, it is the current board's responsibility to make good on debts that the, that the district has. And it's definitely, uh, the administrative team's recommendation that, that we pay our obligations. Um, one way to increase, uh, funding in our classrooms is through, uh, referendum, which we did in twenty thirteen. We did pass referendum, two levels of a referendum that do go directly into our classroom. Uh, if, if what, um, what Mr. Johnston was, uh, Member Johnston, pardon me, um, was talking about at the committee meeting was to, uh, transfer those over to debt service, the levy side, and, and it would go onto the taxpayers to, to pay those. Now, you say it, it's without increasing, um, the payment, and, and I think that's because you wanted to extend that, uh, for a longer period of time, which could reduce the payment, but over the life of the debt, uh, we would be paying more, and that would hinder future opportunities to put more into the classroom. Uh, but what I understood from our bond counsel and from the experts that we heard from at that meeting, that statute prevents us from, from making those changes. So that, that's not a possibility at this time. I, I appreciate that, um, you're suggesting make, make changes with the legislature, but we can't make decisions today with today's money on things that might happen at the legislature in the future. Um, I think that we have a responsibility, um, to, to pay our debts and keep our obligations, and so that is my recommendation, um, that this not, uh, that you not pass this motion to amend.
Member Kirby?
I've got you. Thank you. Uh, I too think that, excuse me, that I would vote against this. I think that, uh, I agree with Member Johnston. I like all of those things that he's talking about. I don't think any of us do not. But it would be irresponsible not to pay, and I think that one of the things that, uh, Member Oswald was concerned about was our bond rating, our financial rating, and that certainly would not be helped by defaulting on a debt at all. Um, as, uh, I remember the Minnesota Department of Education okayed this plan, um, maybe twice, I don't know, uh, and I think that our financial advisor said that I think St. Paul is doing the same thing for four-hundred-and-ninety-four million this year, uh, not what we did. Uh, I see no point in blaming anybody else. It's kind of like I told you so. Uh, it doesn't help anything. I think we need to, uh, pay our debts and deal with what we have to deal with and get on with the matter.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Just referring first, I wanna make it very clear that I'm not advocating that we default on our debts. I'm advocating that we get some credible advice on how to take this debt out of the general fund. And the only way to do that is to force the administration and force our bond people to deal with it. Uh, talking about raising taxes, no. All that we have to do is our bond people could tell us, I've already done the calculations. Yes, our bond people say our interest rates are even lower than I suspected they were. Bond rates are lower. Uh, if that's lower than that, we can even lower the debts more than what I estimated. It's not rocket science to figure out the time value of money. Anybody can do that. Uh, yes, we would be extending the debt. That is the time value of money. It's a way that when people need money and anybody saying that we can't, we don't need money now is kidding themselves. Yes, we need money. We need money to bring back Seventh Hour. We need money to bring back Cosler's. We need money to reduce the achievement gap. So yes, we need that money, and this is a way to do it. Uh, I'm not a lawyer. All that I know is that we have to find some way to stop this drain out of the general fund, and we have to do it now. It will not increase taxes if we get decent, uh, bonding advice. And if we can get a change in the legislature, absolutely. It's, uh, going back to MDE was interesting that their bond person backed last Thursday. They kinda blamed an MDE as well. Well, uh, as another way that I've often advocated, a MDE was part of this. We should be advocating a subsidy for our debt payments from the legislature, just like the range schools did, which ones, which they got through the taconite, uh, tax. Well, we don't have the taconite tax here, but we certainly have influential legislators that can certainly go through and say, "MDE, you approved this. You approved taking this. It's gonna be seventy million dollars out of the general fund." Well, hey, Duluth schools can't do it, so, uh, Minnesota Legislature, it's time you take responsibility for the actions that you did and give us. So that's another option. One is refinancing our debts. Two is going to the legislature. If they don't wanna change the law, then, then ask them, give us a subsidy. Uh, the range does it, so why can't we? One thing I'm interested in is that, one, we stop this drain out of the general fund now.
Member Oswald?
I think I'm gonna be voting against approving your amendment, Member Johnston, but what I wanna say is that if we're transferring three-point-four million dollars out of the general fund to our capital fund at budget time next year, we have failed as a board because I think this is a perfect opportunity to gather together and bring our voice strong saying we need help to the legislature and to MDE in order for our schools to survive and, and to thrive. Um, there's, there's nothing wrong with your amendment from, from the way I view it. We have to do something, and that is, your, your offer of an amendment is something. It's frustrating not being able to do anything sitting up here and being told, "No, you can't refinance. No, you, you have to swallow this debt," and it's hurting us. It's hurting our kids. It's hurting our families. I think we can, over the course of this next year, we can go forward with a, with a strong collective voice in asking and for help so we can stop this, stop this, this excessive bleeding and retain our families and provide the educations we dream of, not the bare minimums.
Member Johnston?
Just, uh, I understand people's concern. I guess that I would answer back, uh, kinda heard the quote from the, uh, Lama, Dalai Lama at the Clayton Jackson McGee thing and something to the line. I'm not good at getting quotes. He said, uh, the quote was, obviously he wasn't there, uh, the quote of his is that, "It's not enough to have compassion. You have to do something." We all have compassion that, uh, we know our schools are suffering for the situation we're in, and I'm asking, do something.
Member Welty?
Ditto, Member Oswald.
As we wrap up this piece of the discussion, I wanna make sure that I comment that we do, it is our job to pay our debt. It is our job to make sure, that we're not in the perfect situation, but we absolutely need to ensure that we continue on the course of making sure that we're paying down, um, what we are responsible for. That would be irresponsible for our current students and our families. And so, I'm seeing no further lights. We'll have a vote on the amendment. All those in favor of amending with Member Johnston's, um, amendment, say aye. Opposed? No. Motion loses one to six. Now, we'll move on to the resolution with regard to the overall budget. Um, see, we had members that had lights on. Member Welty, you were first.
I've said everything I need to say. I do intend to vote against this.
Uh, Member Loeffler Kemp, you were next.
Sure. Um, here's what I know. Um, I know that as a school board candidate, when I was trying to learn about the district finances, I met with the Director of Finances, and I learned a lot. Um, when I went to school board trainings, I made sure, as a new school board member, I attended the trainings on understanding budgets and how to, what kinds of questions to ask to understand school district budgets. Uh, when, um, each year that I've been on the school board, uh, so this will be my third budget cycle, what I know now is that, uh, uh, our staff have provided us with more than enough opportunities to ask questions to try and understand our budget. Uh, what I know now is that this budget cycle, we had staff, our administrative staff, uh, spend a great deal of time, and I heard former board members say more than they had ever gotten in the past, on materials. This is my packet from our meetings, March fifteenth, May sixteenth, June sixth, um, our bonding meeting last week, June sixteenth. Um, and, and what I know is we have had, um, more than enough information to give us confidence in, uh, the budget that hopefully we all will be adopting. Um, we have more than enough, uh, opportunities to raise questions, um, and in fact, the last handout Bill sent us, Mr. Hanson sent us, said, "If you have any questions prior to the meeting on Tuesday, please contact Peggy and me, and one of us will get back to you as soon as possible." Um, here's what I also know, is that at some point, as a school board member, we have to have confidence in our staff. We have to have confidence in each other as board members, um, by the questions that, uh, board members are asking throughout this budget process. And we also have to have some confidence in the legal advice that we get, whether it's on bonding, like last week we got from, uh, Bob Tofti with Freiburger, or whether it's, uh, with the, the bond advisors that were there. Um, and we have, I, I don't know how much time it's been, that just in meetings, let alone what I've done myself to learn and get my questions answered and give input on the proposals that started coming to us back in March. Um, I, I think we all are passionate about, uh, wanting to provide the best education for all of our students. That's why we're on the board. Um, so I guess I just, um, sometimes I feel like I'm sitting in a different meeting, uh, than, uh, other board members, um, in terms of the opportunities to, to raise questions, ask questions, and, uh, be informed on, uh, a variety of things related to our budget. Every month at our committee meeting, business meeting, we have opportunities to ask questions on our budget. So I, uh, I guess I just wanted to make that statement. I wanted to thank the staff that have put in hours and hours and hours, um, since, uh, the beginning of the year, helping to create this budget, helping to give us the information we need when we had questions, uh, listening to our concerns when we've said, "No, we don't want that. Take it off, take in the zero off," um, or other things like that. And I hope we as a board can demonstrate, uh, making a jud-, uh, a decision on this. I asked last week if we ever have not passed a budget in June, and I was told, "No." This board, uh, passports have always passed a budget. I hope we can get to that point tonight. Thank you.
Member Johnston?
I think that, uh, a budget must be done whether or not we have a school board. To say that the school board has been taking, uh, valuable staff time is really kind of silly. Budgets have to be made whether or not we're here. We have a school board. We are here to monitor. We're here to oversee. We're here to make sure what the administration does makes sense, and that includes a budget. A budget takes, uh, is, it is handled by the administration the whole year. There, we all know there's lots of changes that go into that. That is money as, uh, corporate management. When you have big companies, it takes money, even our own private money. It takes a lot. So to say that, uh, we've taken the time of valuable staff, that is why we're here, to remind everybody. What have we not got? I think that I sent a question, uh, back to the superintendent and Mr. Hanson on June third. I had six questions that were not even responded to. One was estimated general fund reserve balance per policy thirty-seventeen. Number two was estimated unassigned fund balance per the UFR code number four-twenty-two. Number three was estimated federal funding by type, for example, title money, Indian ed., etc. Number four was estimated local property tax levy. Number five is estimated total fund budgets, district revenues and expenditures similar to the truth and taxation presentation format. Number six was estimated operating fund expenditures by program, again, similar to the truth and taxation presentation format. Uh, yes, I have complimented the district on giving us more information this year than we have. That information was only about one of our funds, a general fund. This is what we started out with. We had a little bit more. This was our April or February second thing. One week ago, I knew this was coming. We got this twenty-three-page thing. I would challenge one person in this room to find any number from the February second sheet that correlates to anything in this document. You cannot find one correlation. They're there. They're hidden. Maybe I, maybe I haven't found it. Maybe the jigsaw puzzle, maybe I'm missing a piece. Uh, but, uh, there's a lot that was not covered. And say that we were given all the information is incorrect. We asked for this. Uh, we've asked for the, for example, the general fund reserve, I don't know how many times. We know that this, all this stuff is estimates. We're asking, what do you expect is gonna be in the general fund reserve next year? We're asking, what do you think is the tax levy gonna be next year? We have a right to know that when we're talking about a, um, hundred-and-forty-million-dollar budget. Those are questions that I think we, as public officials, have an obligation to ask, and I think the administration has an obligation to tell us, and they have not.
Member Oswald?
Thank you, Chair. I think I, I would like to respectfully request that all of us members of the board continue to use some "I" statements rather than "we" because the "we" statements imply that we're speaking for each other. And I've heard statements that do not apply to me in the collective "we." Um, as Member Loeffler Kemp's mentioned, she had a lot of, went to a lot of trainings. She took it upon herself. We all have. I have, anyway, if I'm gonna adhere to my own request. I have done a lot of research. I have asked questions. I have asked above and beyond. I've asked former board members. I've asked current board members. I've sent emails to Mr. Hanson and Ms. Blaylock. I'm still trying to comprehend the big picture. I'm still trying to comprehend the big picture. I'm not happy with the cuts that we had to make. I think they were in the wrong places, and I think we can do better and pursue different options, and I'll be voting against our budget.
Seeing no further lights, all those in favor of the resolution, oh my gosh, of adoption of the fiscal 2017 budget, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Adoption of the budget passes four to three. I want to just take a brief note to thank the parents and family members that have been waiting, and I know it's been a long discussion tonight, so thank you for sticking in and listening to a little bit more of the comprehensive nature of making decisions. So, appreciate that, you're sticking in. The next, I know, the next resolution, I know that Member Sandstad will be reading has had much discussion in the last item, so hopefully we can, oh, MSHSL.
There's two more.
All right, MSHSL.
And then this.
Yep. Oh, no, I just, I missed that. Keep going.
All right, next. Next up is the Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League, annual renewal. It's recommended that we approve Resolution B 6163377. Do we actually have, okay. I'm going to simplify for all of us. Resolved that the governing board of school district number 709, County of St. Louis, delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine arts events to the Minnesota State High School League, and so hereby certifies the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. This applies to Denfeldt and Duluth East, renewing membership in the Minnesota State High School League. We adopt the Constitution bylaw rules and regulations of said league, et cetera. I move B 6163377.
It's been moved by Member Sandstad, seconded by Member Welty. Any discussion? Seeing no lights, all those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Now, on to the resolution authorizing the insurance of full-term refunding certificates.
Okay. We had a presentation last week from a few folks who know their stuff about bonding, and we had our bond counsel who was to advise us. We had someone from PMA, is that right? Who's also an advisor but separate from the straight-up legal advice. And then we had Northland Securities, who was essentially promoting this sale that they will facilitate. And so, we're looking at refunding bond series, certificates of participation series 2016A. This is equivalent to, sort of equivalent to refinancing your home. So, we are taking bonds that were originally issued in May of 2008, and we are refunding them. We are doing so under the rules that we, this will only go through if there's at least a 3% savings through the refinancing process, the refunding process, and that's a requirement of statute. So, we have to be looking at savings of at least 3% overall to go through with this. And so, the process is that we're going to authorize. Well, they're not even here. Yes, we're authorizing Northland Securities to engage in direct negotiation of the sale of these certificates on our behalf in the near future, and we will know more, we're giving them permission under the bounds of this 3% savings test.
It's PMA, is it?
Okay. So, PMA is authorized to prepare and distribute these official statements regarding these So, that's the simplified version of a three-page resolution. So, I move B 616338.
It's been moved by Member Sandstad, seconded by Member Kirby. Discussion. Member Welty?
Yes, I'm hoping that we can have Mr. Pumper, who is representative for, I think it's PMA or Northland Securities, to ask him a question that I had asked him at the beginning, just before we started out here. I have some questions about the 3% savings that we all were informed that we would make. If Mr. Pumper would be kind enough to come to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Pumper, for joining us this evening. And Member Welty, your question, to Mr. Pumper.
Mr. Pumper, as I said just now, leading up to this question, we are all, or we're all of the impression that there was about a 3% savings. Looking at the full two-page resolution, I see that that is a, it's couched very carefully. Certificates do not exceed $95 million, and the sale of the 216 certificate satisfies the 3% present value savings test required by the Minnesota Statute, Section 475.67, subdivision 12. That's where I left the meeting, but I had a former board member, somebody who's been very interested in our bonding for the last 10 years, and a former banker, tell me that, as a matter of fact, I may not have fully understood what exactly was going on here. We are, as I'm beginning to fear, we are taking $85 million of debt and replacing it with $95 million of debt, which is $10 million more. There is going to be some interest savings, but am I correct in that we're going to be spending $95 million to retire what now is $85 million?
Mr. Pumper?
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Superintendent Grandseth, who stepped off for a second. Madam Chair, do you mind if I answer Mr. Welty's question? But first, just clarify a couple of points from Member Sandstad.
Yes.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Welty?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you for being here. I'm Steve Pumper with PMA Financial. I just want to make sure board members and the audience understands the role of the firms that she mentioned and what actually is happening tonight if you were to pass this resolution. I'm with PMA Financial. Your resolution says that this will be a negotiated sale. It will be refunding, and you did a nice job. Refunding is very similar to do, doing a refinancing of a home mortgage. You're trying to exchange higher interest rates and take advantage of the market with lower interest rates. Our role is acting as your financial advisor, and that's what your resolution states. By doing a negotiated sale, that means you've already selected the firm who is going to purchase the bonds, and that is Northland Securities. So, in this case, if this resolution were to pass, we would go to market and we would do a bunch of things, as you mentioned, prepare the official statement, take your district through a rating call, and then work with Northland Securities to market your bonds to eventually the people they are going to sell it with, to sell it on the open market to. So, that's the different roles, and then, I'm sorry, the third party, of course, is Freiburger Buchanan. They are acting as your bond counsel, because they need to provide a legal opinion on all the bonds that are sold. Included in the resolution, and then actually, this will be directly related to answering your question. If you pass this resolution, in order for us to actually go to market and come with a sale that the board would then ratify, the bonds cannot, the total amount of bonds cannot exceed $95 million. It's a maximum dollar amount, and I'll get back to that number in a minute. That will answer your question, Mr. Welty. And the present value net savings must meet the 3% savings test by Minnesota state statute, so that's the minimum. In other words, if we can't meet 3%, we don't, nobody has authority, you don't as a school board, have the authority to do an advance refunding. And then, you are going to be participating in the state credit enhancement program, and we only have authority to do this through November 1st of 2016. So, if we couldn't get this done and meet those parameters, our, the authority would expire. So, the minimum savings is the 3%, and that would equate to roughly, if you don't mind me approximating, $2.975 million worth of savings. At the committee of the home meeting that was last week, we told you that the savings, if we were to go to market right now, and the net present value savings would be more in the $5.8, $5.9 million savings. The actual savings that go outside of the statute, the real savings that the taxpayers don't have to pay, would actually be closer to $6.7 million. So, that's market conditions now. If we were to go to a sale right now, based on the market conditions that we think we have, we would, and this is answering your question, Mr. Welty, we would sell bonds that would total roughly $84.5 million. Now, the bonds that you're refunding, so that you're retiring that debt by issuing this new debt, is $86.925 million. So, actually, the power amount in today's market would be slightly less than the bonds you're retiring. And now, we're going to get a little confusing, sorry, I don't mean to be, and so I won't go as in-depth unless you ask follow-up questions. But the reason you're actually able to sell less bonds to retire the bonds that you have outstanding, is because the market right now is what's called a premium market, and that means people who want to buy your bonds are willing to pay higher amount of money to collect a higher interest rate down the road. So, they're saying, I'll give you money upfront if we can get some money on the back end. So, because of that, the way the mathematics work is the power amount, or the actual outstanding debt that you would have, would be slightly less under today's condition than the power amount that you have outstanding right now. Now, the reason your resolution states, I have to look at $95 million, is because if we were to sell these bonds at a power amount, meaning that if a person bought a bond that was going to mature in 2029, which is the very last year of the bonds outstanding, and they were going to, you were going to sell it at a 2.5% interest rate, they actually are collecting a 2.5% coupon on it. That's a par. It means you're paying exactly the same amount of money for the amount of interest you're going to collect in the end. If that were to happen, and the market were to go in an unfavorable direction, and you still were able to meet the minimum 3%, you then, in fact, Mr. Welty, would be selling $95 million worth of bonds, or approximately $95 million worth of bonds, to retire $86.9 million. And let me now bring it back to your home mortgage and see if you can understand, you know, why this might make sense. Let's say you have 20 years left to go on a 30-year mortgage. Okay, you originally had a 30-year mortgage, and you have 20 years left to go. And you bought your mortgage when interest rates were really high, so you were paying 6% rate on your mortgage. And now, you could refinance with the balance that you have left, because you've obviously reduced some of that debt over the 10 years. And you want to say, okay, I want to refinance that, and I want to pay it back over 20 years, because that's how much time I have left, and that's what we're doing on this refunding. We're matching up the maturities to the same length of time. And now, I can get 2% rate on my 20 years and exchange that for 6%. But, oh, I'm sorry, I missed one point. And you have $90,000 left on your mortgage, okay? But in order to do that, you may have to take out a mortgage for $100,000 to retire your $90,000, get your 20-year debt left on your mortgage. But you still could save money because of the interest rate being so much lower than your, than your old interest rate. That's what would happen under a par situation, if we needed to retire this debt and we only were able to save 3%. So, that's why it possibly could be as high as $95 million. Under all situations, though, and this is the point that the board really needs to understand, if you don't understand anything else I said, what you really need to understand is that the net savings, the net amount of principal and interest that you will have to pay between now and 2029, will be 3% less than if you didn't take action, if, as long as the market works. I mean, I'm saying, if this works and you save at least 3%, the par plus interest will be 3% less than the par plus interest is right now. Otherwise, we can't do it.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
Sure, just to clarify that, I have some other questions, my own. Because then, we have to have the 3% minimum savings. You're talking about the present value of the 3%, right?
Correct.
Not just 3%, but the present value of the, back must be 3%.
Right. And Member Johnston, can I just clarify too, that, and I didn't mention this, the only reason you need to have the 3% statute that comes into place is because you're doing what's called an advance refunding. So, these bonds do not come due until 2019, they're not refundable to 2019. But if you do an advance refunding, the state says you cannot do that unless you save at least 3%. Once you hit your call date, in this case, which would be February 1st of 2019, you could refund them if you saved a dollar. There's no percentage minimum at that point in time.
Thank you. Member Welty?
Yes, I want to return to that 3%. The state is, we were, explained to us, the state will not allow refinancing for a public body elected school district, unless there is going to be a savings that meets the statutory requirements.
If it's an advance refunding.
And in an advanced refund. Now, I, my throat, obviously, my heart caught when I thought that we were paying off $10 million more, so that it sounded to me like what we were going to be doing is actually over the course of the repayment of this, what is now an $84 million debt, we would actually end up paying $3 million more. That is not the case? Is that what you're telling me?
That is not the case.
Okay.
Thank you. Member Johnston?
I have some general comments, maybe not all of them are going to be directed toward Mr. Pumper. I want to say thank you, Steve. We've had lots of good conversations on MSBA, and I appreciate your advice. But one of the things that I did ask, or one of the things, I'm going to be voting for this, one thing that I asked at the, on the Thursday meeting, which I'm hoping that maybe you can get for me, is I would like to have the, I'll call it the amortization schedule of what we're doing now. I've got an approximate of that, that I use for all my calculations. Never been given a actual true amortization schedule of that. And also, again, if we get the $5.6 million savings, what that amortization schedule would look like? Again, there's been some questions raised on that. I just want to verify by myself, so if I could be given that, and the assumptions go into like the rates of interest, et cetera. If you could do that, I would appreciate it. I think some of the other members that have raised this question would too. That way, we can settle it. That's about all I have for Mr. Pumper. I do have some general comments, but I don't want him to stand up there all the time.
There's other members that have questions. Member Welty?
Thank you, Chair Harla. Mr. Pumper, just to be certain about this, now, the market is always fluctuating minute by minute, and you have a, you've got a reasonably cooperative market at this time to make it possible for us to make a savings. This is a one-time deal. It's the only time we can do it. That's what you all explained to us last week. If, when you are about to close the deal, the market conditions do not allow for a 3% savings for the school district, does it all fall through?
Correct. It won't be sold if that happens.
Thank you.
And I just want to clarify too, while you only have one chance to do an advance refunding on this, we fully expect that your new issue that we will be issuing will also have a call date, which would mean that you would be able to refund that at the call date on the new issue.
Member Loeffler Kemp is next.
To call the question?
The question has been called. All those in favor of calling the question? Aye? Opposed? Here we go again. All right, Member Welty?
I'm sorry that we're going again, Chair Harla, but these are important questions for the finance of the district, and I take umbrage at that comment under your breath with a microphone on. Mr. Pumper, one last question.
Point of information, Member Welty, many of us asked these questions this week, so you may continue.
I may not be as fast as everybody else on the school board. I apologize for that. Mr. Pumper, one last question. Is there any risk that, even if you achieve the 3%, that something might develop over the course of this repayment that would actually come back to bite us in the neck, that would cost us more money? Or are we guaranteed that 3% savings once you ink the deal?
If I understand your question... If I understand your question correctly, Mr. Welty, once the bonds are sold and the bond purchase agreement is signed, the numbers are the numbers, and the savings will be the savings. The amortization schedule will be set at that point in time.
Member Johnston.
I have no more questions for Mr. Pumper, but you can certainly stand up if you want to leave that up to the chair, just have some general comments on this.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Some of my general comments are, first of all, just remind everybody, this CLP, is it a CLP or is it a bond? This is CLP. This one is not being paid out of the general fund, which makes me happy, very happy. Unfortunately, any savings that we get are not going to help us out at all on the general fund. So, no, I'm going to vote for this, because it appears that it's going to be a savings for the taxpayers, they're going to have less taxes to pay to pay off this, thanks to people like Mr. Pumper, who are finding, refinancing these. So, I'm certainly going to be paying for this. But just to remind everybody, this is not helping out our general fund at all. One thing, something which I've noticed, which is very, something new, that everybody now is admitting that three, maybe four of the bonds that we use on the long-range facility debt are coming out of the general fund. And that's a very big change over what we were at a couple of years ago, so I'm hoping that, as we had the discussion earlier, we can actually do something about this. My understanding, though, was from the, from our bond consul, was that it was, these, the other three bonds, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because I was very disappointed that we could not address the full issue of our debt, instead of just one at a time. We were told that we couldn't do that, because the way they were written is that it was virtually impossible, or it'd be illegal for us to refinance the three that we have. So, that really concerns me. We're in this situation, we've already paid thirty-five million dollars out of the general fund, I've said before. This is going to be going on for the next twenty years as well, so we're probably going to be paying something like seventy million dollars out of the general fund. So, we had the opportunity here to address all this, instead, we're doing it piecemeal. I appreciate the savings that we can get with this, but this is just piecemeal. This is not a solution for what we want. I asked a question, well, whoever came up with this plan that we're going to be paying for this out of the general fund, everybody denied it that was sitting at the table. Well, I just did what I was told. Now, we know the truth is, all this money's coming out of the general fund. And now, everybody says, "There's nothing we can do about it." Well, again, I've already expressed this before, so I'll make it short. I'm going to be voting for this, but I think that this was an opportunity that we had now to address all of our debts, and with the interest rates that we're getting on this, we could have dramatically, not only stopped the three point three million dollars came out of the general fund, but we could have even lowered taxes. There's absolutely no question about that at all, except all our bond people and attorneys say, "We can't do it." So, I'm hoping that Mr. Pumper scratches his head, and I hope some of the other people and their agency do, and the lawyers do. I'm certainly going to be scratching the head of people in MDE to try to find a way. So, that's all I have to say. I'm going to be voting for this. Thank you for your work on this, but this is only a fraction of what we should be doing here tonight.
Seeing no further lights, all those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Now, we move on to the resolution, or the next resolution. Member Sandstad.
Thank you, Chair Harla. The next resolution is with regard to playground rubber mulch replacement. You guys get an award for being patient, as we all do. This was the subject of a committee of the whole a little over a month ago, and then was further discussion at the business committee meeting. And I am going to use a "we" statement here, Member Oswald. There seemed to be an agreement that we, all members of the board, are interested in moving forward with replacing the current rubber mulch that's on eight elementary playgrounds and two middle school sites. And we had some further information and discussion. It's going to cost, the ballpark figure is three to four hundred thousand dollars to replace the mulch at all those ten sites, and it'll take some time. And so, we have a proposed resolution here that came out of the meeting last week that I think may get massaged a bit tonight. But, so I'm just going to read it as it is at this point. Be it resolved by the School Board of ISD number seven oh nine, St. Louis County, State of Minnesota, that the administration is hereby directed to initiate a project to identify suitable options and potential funding sources to provide for the replacement of playground rubber mulch at district sites. The School Board will, in a subsequent vote, consider and vote to approve a process, scope and funding sources from the options identified. I move Resolution B six sixteen thirty-three eighty-one.
Second. It's been moved by Member Sandstad, seconded by Member Loeffler Kemp. Discussion, Member Loeffler Kemp.
First of all, thank you again for the parents that have waited to hear this discussion, so thank you for being here. In terms of just a couple amendments or minor changes massaging this, I would like to suggest that where it says of playground rubber mulch at district sites, we put at all district sites with playgrounds and list the schools.
Point of clarification, are you making an amendment?
Yes, I'm making an amendment, sorry. And then, the second amendment and change would be at the end of this resolution to add, the School Board will, in subsequent vote, consider and vote to approve a process, scope and funding sources from the options identified, add, with plans in place for removal during the 2017 construction season.
Second.
Could you say the last part?
Sure. And I know one of our speakers brought this up, I actually, it was similar to what he mentioned, but with plans in place for removal during the 2017 construction season.
It's been moved by Member Loeffler Kemp, seconded by Member Sandstad. Member Oswald, do you have a comment on the motion?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great.
I would like to know from Mr. Leiter if the addition of the middle school playgrounds would be covered in the change in the wording in the amendment, and how much that would add to the proposed estimate of the price of three to four hundred thousand dollars.
Chair Harla, members of the board, Member Oswald, the budget estimate that I provided included the middle schools.
Okay.
And I guess, Member Loeffler Kemp's amendment to refer to all district sites, I was, the mulch at district sites, I considered them all, but if that's clarification, that was the intent, and that's what the budget estimate was.
And the follow-up question I have to that is, is the intent of changing the wording in the amendment meant to include the athletic fields?
No. That wasn't, it was with, that the...
Member Loeffler Kemp?
Sorry.
No, Member Loeffler Kemp. Okay. Mr. Carey.
I don't know if that was a question. I guess, I'm reading this to regard the replacement of playground rubber mulch at all district sites, that the removal of the crumb rubber at district athletic field sites would be a totally different resolution.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, yes. Member Welty.
Yes, I'm hoping that Member Loeffler Kemp will accept, this is a friendly amendment. At the last portion where you say, "Options identified," I'd like it to read, "To be completed no later than the beginning of the 2017-18 school year," because the 2017 construction season, I'm not sure that that necessarily will get us to September or not. Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
Member Loeffler Kemp?
Yeah, I wanted to give the room for the, you know, lots of variables happen during a construction season. I came from a family of construction folks, where, you know, it could be weather, it could be many different things, so I wanted to kind of build in some room for our staff to be able to do this well and do it right.
Mr. Leiter.
Board members, I think what I'm hearing is that the desire of the board is that the plan that's put together and the budgets that ultimately are going to have to be agreed upon by the board would be put in place with the intent that this work would be accomplished before the next school year, not this September, but the September of 2017. That's what I'm hearing. I think, and I appreciate, the variables that can be discovered in a process of construction that by all means, the goal would be to have playgrounds ready by September, but we don't even have bidders lined up yet, or know that we can find contractors that are willing to do this work, how they would approach it, or what complications might be involved. In my opinion, it certainly should be able to be accomplished in a summer, given the whole summer, which at this point, having this discussion, should allow us to have bids as would be required to complete this work, and be in that process well in advance of the start of the summer construction season. So, as soon as school's out, this work would begin at some of those buildings, which June is this current fiscal year budget that you just approved. So, we're going to keep that in mind.
Member Loeffler Kemp, your comments on the friendly amendment done. Are you okay? Do you accept, member?
I gotta think about it. Board members, do you want, other board members, do you want to respond?
Member Sandstad is next.
Thank you. I would agree with Member Welty's proposed friendly amendment to the amendment. And I also see some ambiguity in the 2017 construction season wording, so I would say yes, plans in place for removal no later than September 2017, something like that.
Would the motioner feel confident in changing the removal to 2017 and the second or be opposed to that, so we don't have to amend the amendment for this? Are you comfortable with that?
I would accept that change.
To my amendment?
Oh, yeah, to your amendment, and the second or was, ooh, I think it was me.
It was, it was.
Yes, I accept my proposal to amend. All right, Robert's rules, thank you. Okay, so, the amendment then reads, "With plans in place for removal by the 2017-2018 school year." Correct? Nods? Correct? Okay. Next comment, Member Kirby.
Thank you. I think I will be voting for this. I'd like to commend all the parents who put all this work into it. I think that it's, a timeline is very necessary, both for their work and for ours, and we should commit to that. I think that, I would like to make another issue, I'd like to thank them for maybe compromising. I think they wanted all of this done by this fall. We are presented with lots of issues at the school board, and they all seem to be single issues. There are people who don't want to pay taxes, there are people who want zero hour, there are people who don't want tire mulch, there's people who want transportation different, there's people who want boundaries changed, or music and arts. And all of these are good, but as a board, we have to look at the whole picture. And so, sometimes there's compromise involved, and we have to take into account all students and all staff, and I think that's what we're doing here. I want people to know that, some people think that, "Well, we didn't get what we want, they didn't listen to us." Well, no, just because you don't get what you want exactly, doesn't mean people don't listen. I think we listened a lot and are very thankful for that, and probably will be listening further, too, but I will be voting for this.
Thank you. Member Oswald.
With, without having to ask for an amendment to the amendment, I would like to know the intent from Mr. Leiter in leading this charge of the involvement of the DeLuce Parents for Healthy Playground group, being that they have been very passionate about this topic and learned more about playground services than the collective rest of us in the room. I think it would be imperative that we include them in moving forward and how our new surfaces develop, and taking advantage of their offers for help and doing lots of legwork. And so, I'm wondering, from your perspective, how you intend to include their voices in planning this.
I'm actually going to direct the question to the superintendent, if that's all right, Member Oswald.
I think developing the process for doing this is part of the charge. You know, certainly, in most of our processes, we include staff and principals and parents. And so, as we move forward, I know there's going to be several phases to this. Part of it will be working with architects, who will need to design how it physically happens, and so, we'll continue to gather people's input, but I don't have that process in place yet.
Can I respond? Thank you. I just want to emphasize that I think it's imperative that this group maintain close contact with their baby. I mean, this issue wouldn't be before us if it wasn't for them being so passionate about kids, and not just their own kids, but kids, all the kids in our schools. And so, I will forego asking to be included in the resolution with the sincere hope that they will continue to be involved, like you promised. Thanks.
Member Johnston.
Just a point of information, are we just discussing the amendment now, or are we discussing the full?
I thought folks were discussing the amendment, then folks moved into discussing the overall, so...
Okay. I can follow this way till after the amendment gets passed, and I'll have a comment, if that's all right.
Okay. Is this, Member Loeffler Kemp, this is a comment on the amendment or on the overall?
No, I was moving where Member Kirby was moving, so let's do the amendment.
Member Loeffler Kemp?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Amendment passes seven zero. Now, Member Johnston.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to say that I'm so impressed with the group that has been working on this and promoting this, that has been really amazing. You haven't just complained and sent us emails, you've actually done a whole lot of scientific research work, political research work, you've got doctors and PhDs helping you, and some of you are. Just want to say thank you for bringing this to our attention, because I really wasn't aware of it. And I think that it is people like yourself, that's, if all our parents were as active as you are, gee, we wouldn't probably even need a school board, so thank you. I would like to second what Member Oswald said, that I'm hoping that the expertise that you've brought has been really amazing. We still have decisions to make, like what alternatives to take, what the research you're doing, that I'm hoping that you can help work with the superintendent and with his staff. I'm thinking that we can get a very positive, very positive result out of this, so thank you.
Member Loeffler Kemp?
Oh, sure. I just, I guess, wanted to wrap it up by saying, what I heard at the discussion that, at the committee meeting, is that all of us as school board members felt very strongly about moving forward with the removal of the mulch on playgrounds. And I know in the past months that many of us as school board members have been working on this issue in different ways, with both the parents and with our own staff and other community-based groups that have a great deal of knowledge on different public health issues like this. And so, I look forward to it. And so I, I look forward to us agreeing on something. I also look forward to us addressing some of the other topics that were talked about last week. One is just the hand washing and what we can do on the short term between now and the fall to make sure we have good things in place in all of our schools to address hand washing. And what I heard at the committee meeting was that we respect that our staff will need some time to put together a process, and whether that's involving the community in different ways, our staff will come back to us, and I appreciated the way this resolution was worded, that there will be a number of steps to this process to approve along the way and to continue to provide input. So we invite also the community members that are here and others that have been involved to come as we're going through the steps with us as well and attend the meetings and stay abreast and look forward to involving you in whatever ways seem to make the most sense and look forward to working with our staff on this. And again, I'm glad that we all could agree on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor of resolution B 163381, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No, motion passes unanimously. And we look forward to you helping us promote how we're leading statewide. That's, it's important. It's important. So thank you very much for your patience. You're welcome to stay through the end if you'd like. Member, Member Sandstad, can someone let my dog out, please? Okay, Member Sandstad, if you'd like to finish with the business committee meeting?
Yes. Thank you. All right, last few things, informational items, expenditure contracts, revenue contracts, other contracts, no change orders, there is the facilities management and capital project status report on 156. And other than that, future items will be some insurance renewal and policy updates. With that, I move the business committee report.
Second. It's been moved by Member Sandstad, seconded by Member Loeffler Kemp. Any discussion on the business committee report? Member Johnston?
Yes. I would like a discussion on 1F.
Okay.
And to speed things up, I'd like to have a vote on item two in its entirety, item three in its entirety, and item four in its entirety.
Two, three, and four, together or separate?
I'll, if you want to get it, I'm voting for these, but...
Okay, so you're looking to do two, three, and four separate. All right, we'll begin with APU projections.
Okay, I apologize, I know we've went really long here, but this is the last month, month of the school year, and yes, I am going to talk about the enrollment because it's really important. We have lost another 23 students compared to last month, that's another classroom of kids. Compared to June of last year, in 2015, we've lost 113 more students, trying to compare apples to apples here, that's equivalent to probably about four classrooms of kids we've lost. That's almost half the size of Lakewood that we've lost. Last year we did worse, we lost about 200 in that same time period, so we are maybe, maybe you could say we're doing better, but we, I think we've had one, one year in the last 10 where we've actually had an increase, and that was 10. I think then it made the headlines of the Duluth News Tribune. In 10 years, we've lost 2,200 students from 2006. If you look at the money, that's $24 million per year that we have lost. This, this year, the biggest decrease that we had was Stowe, we lost 41 kids, which is about 11 percent decrease. Piedmont, we lost 26 kids, East High School, we lost 44. Both middle schools both lost about 25 apiece, which is about 3 percent. The good news for me is that Denfeld actually stayed the same this year, so that's really This does concern me because of the amount of money. And where did this projection, you know, back in the long-range facility plan, I said before, I'm going to say it really quick, is that that was projected to have a low of over, about over 1,000, we were supposed to have a low of actually 9,300 according to the original projections. And remember, that was done by the, if I recall, the state demographer. And just to cautioning everybody, we, here, I think about a year ago, we had another demographics projection by RSP, we're actually below their projection already too. And their projection, one of the things they said, I mean, this was some of their sales thing, I'm not holding them to it, but they said, we have a 97 percent projection accuracy.
On the first year.
What?
On the first year.
On the first year, oh, okay, well, boy, I didn't see that footnote in there. But I, but projections, my point is not to make fun of RSP or even the state demographer, but is to say that projections are notoriously poor. And the fact is that we are losing things. And rather than to go on anymore, I'm going to say that, you know, I have proposed many ways to, I think, stop the achievement gap, and I'll mention a couple of those again. Improving transparency, show a real positive persona of our school board and district to the parents. Not a facade of positiveness, but something real that this board and the community can see. Another thing I've advocated is that we have to improve our graduation rates and test scores. And of course, other thing is bringing back seven-period days, when we've had the discussion the last few months on alternative schools, everybody tells me seven-period days is what we got to do. So far, none of these proposals that I've had have been acted on, and I think that we do, I'll go back to the Dalai Lama comment again, is that it's, it's not good enough to be passionate about something, we must act. And we're all passionate, we all are concerned about the loss of enrollment, but concern isn't enough, we have to do something and do it something about the factors that are causing it.
Thank you. We will now vote separately on items two, three, and four. Any discussion on items two, three, and four voted on separately. Seeing no lights, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Two, three, and four pass unanimously. And now we will vote on the moving of the full business committee agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes six to one. That brings us to the order of special resolutions, questions and other. Seeing no further lights, our meeting is adjourned.